This meeting will now come to water. I'd like to welcome everyone to this first actual virtual RTM meeting on Zoom. Thank you all for joining us. Thank you for all that has gone into the work that has allowed us to meet virtually. My name is Tom Byrne. I am the RTM moderator. I would like to offer some thank yous at the beginning. Craig, if you could put that first slide up, please. We have been relying on the technical expertise and the very long hours that the town has given to us. And you see the names here Jenny Larkin and Craig Jones have been our go to tech experts, and we thank them sincerely for all the hard work that they have done and that they continue to do. We want to thank Tom Klein, our Chief Information Officer, for putting that team together along with Jake Ellis, who we rely on as well. Next slide, Craig, please. Tonight, our meeting is being carried by GCTV on cable. Channel depends on what service you have and over the internet on YouTube with their live streaming. And we want to thank Horst Tebby and Drew Marzullo, who make GCTV go. And whenever we need them, they answer the call. And we are so grateful both to Horst and Drew and offer our thanks to them. And additionally, actually, before, hold on, hold on to that next slide. I didn't, I didn't put the names up, but I would be remiss if I did not thank the members of the media who I deal with, Ken Borsak of the Greenwich Time and Tony Savino of WGCH. We all know, given what has happened to our economy, there really is nothing to advertise. And I'm sure the economic health of their employers is at risk. And yet they continue doing a wonderful job and being very responsive. And we rely so much on the reporting that they do. And so I do want to thank both Ken and Tony for, for the hard work that they're doing. And we wish them improved economic health as we go forward. And their employers is what I'm referring to. Next slide, please. And finally, Kimberly Spizano, our Assistant Town Clerk, Alexis Vulgaris, our Moderator Pro Tem, have been working around the clock for weeks. They use the term 24/7. It really is unbelievable how hard they have been working any hour, any day. And I am so grateful. None of this could happen without their assistance. The organization that is required for this to happen is unbelievable, as I'm sure all of our 230 members can appreciate. So a very sincere thank you to Kimberly Spizano and Alexis Vulgaris for making this, making this work. All right. Let us begin. I'd like you all to join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, normally I start by saying all members have received the copy of the call and the reading of the call will be omitted. Tonight, I do want to clarify right at the outset, what is on the call? There were late additions when information came to us after the call deadline. So we have a total of five items. There were originally two. The first item is the proposed tipping fee ordinance. Second item was the Board of Ed interim appropriation. That will not be taken up tonight. The BET did not act on it, and we cannot act on an appropriation that has not been approved by the BET. We then added item three, which was setting a new schedule for adoption of a budget pursuant to an executive order. We were given the leeway of extending our deadlines by 30 days, and item three addresses that. We then learned about two programs that every municipality had to decide whether they were going to participate in one or the other or both, but they had to pick one. That is item four. That is a tax deferment program that delays the payment of taxes up to three months. And the other is a low interest payment program. And so that will be item four. Heather Smariglio will present us the tax deferment option consistent with the decisions of our committees. And item five, which we will take up first, is a proposed rule change. Obviously, we cannot vote in person the way we are accustomed to. We have the district tabulators, but in our practice meeting, we found some delays. And we, we decided to amend the rules to set a limit of five minutes within which votes must be delivered to the district tabulator. After that period of time, the tabulators are directed to send whatever votes they have to the town clerk for tabulation. So that will be our agenda. We will take up item five when we get to the call first, then items three, then four, and we will leave item one till last. And the reason for that, I thank those who signed up in advance to speak on items of interest to them. But what we learned was there were over 80 entries indicating an interest in, in speaking. And because we need to act on all of the resolutions tonight, knowing that item one would take the most time, we're going to take it up last. So as we now prepare to conduct our business, I do want to just remind, make a few reminders here. This is a webinar which breaks participants into two categories, panelists and attendees. We currently have 37 panelists and 225 attendees. The attendees who have signed up to speak are going to have to be unmuted. There's no video for attendees. We will have to unmute an attendee and identify, make sure it's, it is the, the appropriate person. So we will need to verify that initially. No video for the attendees. And this is in accordance with the recommendation of the town's cybersecurity consultant. There will be some procedural votes. I am going to start off with two procedural votes, given the number of speakers tonight and the length of time it will take us to vote. I think there's a consensus that we adopt a limit on debate. So we'll take up a motion to limit debate. And because our practice is not to run past midnight, we will take up a motion to adjourn at midnight if we have not completed our business. Those being procedural votes, we don't need record votes. And you know that I will, I generally call for a voice vote on those. The analogous method in this environment is to ask those who are for something to raise their hands, and we are going to try that method. If it becomes problematic, you know, then we would, our only option is to resort to a recorded vote, and we know that that takes time. When and if I utilize the raise hand vote, I caution those who are attending this meeting that only members may participate in any vote. So I, I asked, there is, this meeting is obviously being recorded, and there is a record of who raised their hand. And so I just ask for everyone's cooperation. We know this is a trying environment for us. When we get to recorded votes, no business will proceed until the vote has been completed. There will be a screen. We have prepared some slides to alert people as to what, what precisely will be subject of the vote. There will be some music playing. What we need, what, what I am asking for is your patience tonight and your attentiveness. We need you to follow these proceedings. We want everyone to cast informed votes, and that means we have to pay attention to those who are speaking. We have to send in our votes at the appropriate time so the meeting can move along. And there will be dead time during the voting process, and it just would lead to too much inattentiveness. We will have the music playing. That can be a clue as to when we're ready to proceed. As soon as the music stops in general and the slide comes down, we will proceed with the next item of business. So keep in mind, you know, we enjoy a very free exchange of information when we meet in person. That has been severely curtailed. We are going to do our best to replicate the environment when we are together, but it's not going to be possible to do that precisely. So I thank you all for your dedication, for your hard work, and good luck to us as we proceed tonight. So at this, at this point, I would recognize Ed Dodakis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, members of the town meeting. Mr. Moderator, I would like to move to limit debate this evening to two minutes per speaker and five minutes for the chief proponent and chief opponent of each item as you so designate.
All right. Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded to limit debate to two minutes per speaker per item. Is that correct, Mr. Dodakis, not per motion?
That's correct, Mr. Moderator.
All right, just so our members know, there, there are motions to amend directed to item one. This would mean if you speak on anything for two minutes, that you will have used up your time for, for item one. Motion to limit debate is not itself debatable, and it requires a two thirds majority to pass. I will, Craig, could you put up that first slide? So I am going to ask those in favor first to raise their hand if you favor that two minute, minute limit, with the exception that the proponent and principal opponent to be determined by the moderator would have five minutes each. So all those in favor of the two minute per speaker limit, please raise your hand. All right, I have a count of, well, it fluctuates. Not quite sure how it goes down, but I have a count of 175. All right, let's lower all those hands. Craig, can you lower the hands? Okay, I'm not calling yet for anything, so we should see no hands raised. We could lower all the hands. I see some hands up for the panelists and the attendees. All right. Well, next slide, please. Craig, you got the next slide? All right, all those against the limit, the two minute per speaker limit, please raise your hand. All right. I currently see 23. The number's going down. I don't know why that would be. All right, I currently see 22. All right, that motion is carried. So for the balance, thank you all very much for your cooperation. For the balance of the evening, there will be a two minute limit per speaker with the exception of the proponent and principal opponent. All right, Steve Rubin. I recognize Steve Rubin, District Three.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to offer a motion to adjourn at midnight tonight and reconvene tomorrow, Tuesday, April 21st at 8:00 PM, if meeting so runs.
All right, can we get the next slide, please, Craig?
I second that, Mr. Moderator.
We have a motion to adjourn our meeting if we have not completed our business at midnight tonight and to reconvene at eight o'clock on Tuesday night. It has been seconded. I will call for a hand vote again. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn at midnight, please raise your hand. All right. I have 173. Can we lower all those hands, please? And next slide. All right, all those against that motion to adjourn at midnight, please raise your hand. All right, 22. That motion is carried. Thank you very much. All right. We will begin with item five. Kip Bergweger has that motion, has that resolution.
Item five is to limit time limit for submitting a vote in a remote RTM meeting. Resolve that represent town meeting of the town of Greenwich hereby amends the rules, and I'm going to paraphrase, to add the following. And since it's, it's as shown in the, in the call, but since it came up very late, I will read it just to be sure you know it. When the RTM is required to meet remotely, one member of each district shall serve as a tabulator of the votes of each district. Members shall have a period of five minutes measured from the time the moderator calls for a record vote to get their vote to the district tabulator. The tabulators shall mark the district voting card accordingly and forward it to the Assistant Town Clerk for counting. After the five minute period has expired, the tabulator shall close the voting for the district and forward the district voting card to the Assistant Town Clerk, even if all the votes of members present have not been received.
All right, thank you. That being offered on behalf of our Legislative and Rules Committee does not require a second. Mr. Bergweger, the report on behalf of Legislative and Rules.
Well, we had the experience when we, last Monday, when we, when we had our practice, that some of the votes that the districts were taking were taking an inordinate amount of time because not all of the district members were immediately available. The tabulators got together and have asked for a limitation on the amount of time that is available. And I know that the tabulator for District Eight has explained that the five minutes was acceptable to all of the tabulators. So Legislative and Rules took it, took up this matter, and we voted 11-0-0 to approve both the legal, legal order and the merits. And interestingly enough, one of the districts was away because her baby was crying.
All right, thank you very much. Discussion on item five, Brian Rainey.
Mr. Moderator. I think this is the most important vote we'll take tonight. I feel that sometimes the, the RTM is considered a vestigial appendage, and the fact that we can, in fact, meet and do business and exercise our authority at this time is hugely important. And I strongly recommend that we vote for this and move on tonight.
Thank you. Further discussion on item five. Now, I see, I see a hand raised among the attendees. Mr. Viddy, we're going, could we unmute? I know we had this problem at our practice meeting with Mr. Viddy, but let's, let's see if we can unmute him and verify.
Okay, Mr. Viddy, could you please unmute and say your name?
Don Viddy, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm having problems with my computer. The, the, it goes from lower hand to raise hand without my touching it. So ignore anything that has with my hand raised.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. And I see a hand raised by Donald Wyko. Can we unmute, Mr. Wyko?
Hold on a second. Here we go. So Mr. Wyko, could you please unmute yourself and say your name? Mr. Wyko?
Okay, I'm having the same problem. My, my hand raises going from green to white on, without my control.
All right, thank you very much. All right, can we put up the next slide, Craig, please? I'm going to call for the vote on item number five. If you are in favor of this five minute limit within which members have to get their vote to the tabulators, you vote yes. If you are opposed to it, you vote no. And we will play some music. We don't have a five minute limit in effect yet, so we will have to await the result of this vote before we can proceed further. So again, I ask for your indulgence and your patience while this vote is taking place. All right. I believe the final district vote is coming in. As often happens, I make mistakes. And in proceeding to this first item, I did neglect to, number one, take care of our minutes from our March meeting, and number two, introduce our first selectman Fred Camillo. So let me do the latter first. Is our first selectman available?
Good evening, Tom. Yes, I am.
Right. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Tom. I appreciate it. And thank you for allowing me the chance just to speak briefly tonight. Hats off to the RTM leadership, membership, and our IT department here. Tom, Craig, Jenny, Jake, and the good folks over at GCTV, Horst and Drew, for doing a great job getting this up and running. Just wanted to briefly give you an update. I know it's a long night, so I'll make this really quick and offer a couple of words of hope and inspiration to everybody. Yes, we're still getting continued cases here in Greenwich, but the good news is the hospitalization rate is going down. It looks like our closing of the parks and beaches early did pay some dividends compared to the places that did not do that. Trails are open. They've always been open. And it was out there this weekend for trails on Sunday. People are doing the right thing. So in the coming days, I'll be making an announcement for, just to let you know, of expanded opportunities to get out there and walk and hike and do some exercising. So thank you all for really pitching in and going at it as a real team effort. We are meeting daily. Not all towns are doing that, but we are meeting daily in our emergency operations center at the Public Safety Complex to go over, assess, and reassess all the policies and the numbers. And also, I'm in contact with my fellow mayors and first selectmen throughout Connecticut, Nostis, and Fairfield County, and of course with Mayor Philankka in Portchester. Things are going in the right direction, and we are preparing a revision to our budget to deliver a lower mill rate and to give some taxpayer relief to our citizens. So again, thank you all very much for all what you're doing, Tom, for allowing me to speak tonight. And even though we're not there yet each day, we're getting closer to the other side. So again, thank you and God bless.
Thank you, Fred. Thank you for joining us. And I know you're sticking around for the tipping fee ordinance. So thank you very much. I do have the results of the vote on item number five. This was the change to our rules on voting and cutting it off at five minutes. Those in favor, 212. Opposed, 10 abstaining, zero. That item has carried. But not only has that item carried, that's 222 votes. I have never seen a vote total of 222 in my tenure on the RTM. So I suppose it's no surprise. We may have people out of state joining us tonight, members, but we are delighted that you have joined us. Thank you all for everything that you're doing for us. All right. The other mistake I made was not getting our minutes from March approved. We did have two changes that we had to make. There was a typo, Jane Weissbecker. There was a numeral one following her name. We will remove that and replace it with a semicolon. And item number one, it said it was postponed from our January meeting. That was the Energy Commission. It was not postponed. It was placed on our March call pursuant to our second read requirement, and we will make that change as well. Are there any other proposed changes to the minutes of our March meeting? Hearing none. The minutes as amended stand adopted upon unanimous consent. All right. Item number three now comes before us. Amina Ahmad, our Assistant Town Attorney, will present that to us. Amina.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. This is Amina Ahmad, Assistant Town Attorney. Item number three is being offered as a substitute resolution. This resolution is authorized by the Governor's Executive Orders 7B, 7C, and 7I, and authorizes the representative town meeting to modify the town's budget adoption schedule and to hold all budget meetings remotely. It is the same as it appears on the call except for a date that was changed, and that date now reads not later than June 14, 2020, as the date by which the representative town meeting must take action upon the proposed budget.
Thank you very much. Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution on item three? Our panelists can jump in for this.
So moved.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. May we get the reports on item three? We'll begin with Mike Basham, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Heather Spriglio, the tax collector, spoke and recommended that the RTM adopt the tax deferral program and the Governor's Executive Order that would allow the town, sit all of the town, and she said that would allow all of the town's citizens to defer their taxes until...
Mike, excuse me, Mike. This is item three. The tax deferment is item four. This is simply...
Oh, modified. Forgive me. Forgive me. Modified calendar. We voted 12-0-0.
This is simply moving the budget back 30 days.
Yes, we voted 12-0-0. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Kip Bergweger, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
We had Amina to help us to consider this. At the time, we were looking at a version that said the date would be June 8. The moderator pointed out that if we have a June 8 date, and that's when our budget meeting will be, and we need more time, we wouldn't have it unless we extended it to the full length, which would be June 14. And so we agreed to do that. And the vote on legal order and the merits was 11-0-0. District Three had not yet joined the meeting.
All right. Thank you. Discussion on item three. Seeing no interest at speakers, will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number three. Craig, can we get that slide for item number three? We now have a five-minute limit, so I encourage our members to get those votes in as quickly All right. All right. The five minutes has expired. The five minutes has expired. Hopefully, all tabulators have now sent their cards in. Hopefully, all tabulators have now sent their cards in. We will continue to wait, however, for the, the final vote. We will continue to wait, however, for the, the final vote. All right. All right, we do have the result of the vote. We do have the result of the vote. Those in favor, whoa, 225. Those in favor, whoa, 225. Opposed, zero. Opposed, zero. Abstaining, zero. Abstaining, zero. That item has carried. That item has carried. Item four now comes before us. Item four now comes before us. We have our Tax Collector with us, Heather Smiriglio, We have our Tax Collector with us, Heather Smiriglio, who will present the item to us. who will present the item to us. Do we have Heather Smiriglio? Do we have Heather Smiriglio?
Heather, turn on your video. Heather, turn on your video.
She's lost her microphone. She's lost her microphone. She might be calling in. She might be calling in.
All right. All right. Amina, would you mind just presenting it? Amina, would you mind just presenting it? We will, we will come back to Heather for the discussion. We will, we will come back to Heather for the discussion. Is that possible, Amina? Is that possible, Amina?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Yes, Mr. Moderator.
This is Amina Ahmad, our Assistant Town Attorney. This is Amina Ahmad, our Assistant Town Attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. Item number four Item number four is a resolution of the representative town meeting pertaining to participation by the town of Greenwich is a resolution of the representative town meeting pertaining to participation by the town of Greenwich in the Tax Deferment Program as authorized by Executive Orders 7S and 7W. in the Tax Deferment Program as authorized by Executive Orders 7S and 7W. It is a substitute resolution. It is a substitute resolution. The resolution that was on the call contained both options available to the town, The resolution that was on the call contained both options available to the town, which would have been the tax deferment option and the low-interest rate option. which would have been the tax deferment option and the low-interest rate option.
All right. All right. And in order to save us the trouble of amending that resolution and taking the, the low-interest program out, And in order to save us the trouble of amending that resolution and taking the, the low-interest program out, you have substituted a resolution with only the Tax Deferment Program. you have substituted a resolution with only the Tax Deferment Program. Is that correct? Is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct.
Now, so Craig, could you put up the next slide? Now, so Craig, could you put up the next slide? All right. All right. Next one, maybe. Next one, maybe. Keep going. Keep going. Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. I was looking at, I was not looking at the screen. I was looking at, I was not looking at the screen. Hang on a minute. Hang on a minute. All right. All right. Could you back up? Could you back up? One, you had the right one. One, you had the right one. I was looking in the wrong place. I was looking in the wrong place. All right. All right. So this is the resolved clause So this is the resolved clause of the resolution that, the substitute resolution that Amina Ahmad has just presented to us. of the resolution that, the substitute resolution that Amina Ahmad has just presented to us. You see these three paragraphs to it. You see these three paragraphs to it. I will point out, if you look at I will point out, if you look at Paragraphs 1 and 2 there, it talks about eligible taxpayers. Paragraphs 1 and 2 there, it talks about eligible taxpayers. We are intending to make the program available to all taxpayers. We are intending to make the program available to all taxpayers. There's no eligibility requirement. There's no eligibility requirement. And given the difficulty of amending the language, it is that, And given the difficulty of amending the language, it is that, it is that it is that version of the Tax Deferment Program that our committees have recommended. version of the Tax Deferment Program that our committees have recommended. Next slide, please, Craig. Next slide, please, Craig. And you see, you see in Paragraphs 4 and 5 the same words, eligible taxpayers, eligible business, nonprofit. And you see, you see in Paragraphs 4 and 5 the same words, eligible taxpayers, eligible business, nonprofit. Once again, no eligibility requirements. Once again, no eligibility requirements. This merely defers the due date three months from whatever due date, This merely defers the due date three months from whatever due date, and there are different due dates for sewers and property taxes. and there are different due dates for sewers and property taxes. Is that, is that your understanding, Ms. Ahmad? Is that, is that your understanding, Ms. Ahmad?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, that is correct. Yes, Mr. Moderator, that is correct.
All right. All right.
And, yes. And, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. All right. Now, what I showed you was just the resolved portion of the resolution. Now, what I showed you was just the resolved portion of the resolution. There, there is a lengthy whereas that precedes it. There, there is a lengthy whereas that precedes it. Will a member please move the adoption of this substitute resolution? Will a member please move the adoption of this substitute resolution?
So moved. So moved.
It has, the substitute resolution on item four has been moved and seconded. It has, the substitute resolution on item four has been moved and seconded. We will first get the committee reports, and then we will hear from our Tax Collector, We will first get the committee reports, and then we will hear from our Tax Collector, assuming we were able to solve that problem. assuming we were able to solve that problem. So the first, the first report, Lucia Jansen, Chair of our Budget Overview Committee. So the first, the first report, Lucia Jansen, Chair of our Budget Overview Committee.
Good evening, Lucia Jansen of the BOC. Good evening, Lucia Jansen of the BOC. We first want to thank Heather and her team, who replied to not only the BOC, We first want to thank Heather and her team, who replied to not only the BOC, but the entire RTM with a very comprehensive package of background information on the executive order. but the entire RTM with a very comprehensive package of background information on the executive order. She also included in her recommendation for the RTM to pursue She also included in her recommendation for the RTM to pursue her analysis and opinions from the town attorney and the town comptroller, her analysis and opinions from the town attorney and the town comptroller, and answers to all the questions she received from our committee and all of the RTM. and answers to all the questions she received from our committee and all of the RTM. At the BOC meeting, Heather highlighted the true financial need by many of our Greenwich residents At the BOC meeting, Heather highlighted the true financial need by many of our Greenwich residents and her summary analysis and recommendation for the 90-day tax deferral. and her summary analysis and recommendation for the 90-day tax deferral. The BOC voted and approved the 90-day tax deferral, The BOC voted and approved the 90-day tax deferral, applied to all Greenwich taxpayers who were not explicitly excluded by Lamont's executive order. applied to all Greenwich taxpayers who were not explicitly excluded by Lamont's executive order. The vote was 10, 6, and 8 absent at the time of vote. The vote was 10, 6, and 8 absent at the time of vote. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Mike Basham with Finance Committee report. Mike Basham with Finance Committee report.
Yes, Heather presented to us, and she recommended that we approve the tax deferral Yes, Heather presented to us, and she recommended that we approve the tax deferral applying to all citizens between July 1 through the 1st of October. applying to all citizens between July 1 through the 1st of October. Karen Fasulitis was there as, from the BET, and she also recommended that. Karen Fasulitis was there as, from the BET, and she also recommended that. And she mentioned that the town attorney had informed her And she mentioned that the town attorney had informed her that most other towns preferred this option as well. that most other towns preferred this option as well. The committee voted 12-0-0 to recommend. The committee voted 12-0-0 to recommend.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And our final report, Kip Bergweger, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee. And our final report, Kip Bergweger, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, Legislative and Rules had the help of the Tax Collector, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, Legislative and Rules had the help of the Tax Collector, Heather Smiriglio, and we also had the help of Karen Fasulitis and Beth Cromick of the BET. Heather Smiriglio, and we also had the help of Karen Fasulitis and Beth Cromick of the BET. Our vote on the deferment applicable to all residents, both legal order and merits was 12-0-0. Our vote on the deferment applicable to all residents, both legal order and merits was 12-0-0.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Discussion on item four. Discussion on item four.
We have Heather on the phone. We have Heather on the phone. Is it appropriate to bring her up now? Is it appropriate to bring her up now?
Yes, please. Yes, please.
Okay, I'm going to unmute her. Okay, I'm going to unmute her. I renamed her so that we can see her. I renamed her so that we can see her. She's on the phone. She's on the phone. But Heather, could you please state your name? But Heather, could you please state your name?
Hi, yes. Hi, yes.
Can you unmute yourself? Can you unmute yourself?
RTM Leader. RTM Leader. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Yes, I can.
Yes, we can. Yes, we can. Heather Smiriglio, Tax Collector for the town of Greenwich. Heather Smiriglio, Tax Collector for the town of Greenwich. Welcome, Heather. Welcome, Heather.
Good evening, RTM leaders and members. Good evening, RTM leaders and members. This is Heather Smiriglio. This is Heather Smiriglio. I just was on the computer, but I'm having a difficult time. I just was on the computer, but I'm having a difficult time. I apologize. I apologize. I just wanted to just briefly state that this Executive Order 7S I just wanted to just briefly state that this Executive Order 7S came down from Governor Lamont on March 10. came down from Governor Lamont on March 10. They offered two programs through the state, the deferment program and the low-interest rate program. They offered two programs through the state, the deferment program and the low-interest rate program. I am recommending the deferment program across the board for all the taxpayers I am recommending the deferment program across the board for all the taxpayers to relieve any undue burden on them and to ease the administration and the office for them. to relieve any undue burden on them and to ease the administration and the office for them. And if there's any questions, I would be happy to answer. And if there's any questions, I would be happy to answer. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. All right. Thank you very much for joining us. Thank you very much for joining us. And of course, no apology is necessary. And of course, no apology is necessary. We, we are delighted that you are here with us. We, we are delighted that you are here with us. Further discussion on item, Further discussion on item, further discussion on item four. further discussion on item four. All right. All right. I'm going to call for the vote. I'm going to call for the vote. Craig, could you put that next slide up, please? Craig, could you put that next slide up, please? Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Now, remember, this is just the tax deferment option, Now, remember, this is just the tax deferment option, and it will apply to all taxpayers. and it will apply to all taxpayers. There's no eligibility requirement. There's no eligibility requirement. Pushes back the due date by three months. Pushes back the due date by three months. If you are in favor of that, you vote yes. If you are in favor of that, you vote yes. If you are opposed, you vote no. If you are opposed, you vote no. Now, understand, if we didn't adopt it, we would have to consider something further, Now, understand, if we didn't adopt it, we would have to consider something further, because we do have an obligation to adopt either the tax deferment because we do have an obligation to adopt either the tax deferment or the low-interest program or both. or the low-interest program or both. All right. All right. Let's start that clock. Let's start that clock. All right. Our five minutes has expired. I believe most of the voting cards have been sent in. We are awaiting the tabulation, but we are going to move on to our final item on the agenda tonight. Now, I, I say it's the final item on our agenda tonight. I have been made aware that District 8 adopted a proposed pay-as-you-throw ordinance and intends to put it before, try to put it before the RTM tonight. We are going to deal with this proposed tipping fee ordinance first. Whatever happens at the end, I will then go to the District 8 Chair to see what, if anything, District 8 proposes to do. Because their proposal is not on our agenda, we would first, in, in order for us to consider it, we would first have to consider a motion to take it up, which would need to be approved by a 2/3 majority. So I don't want to mislead you that there, there's nothing that would follow item one. We'll just have to wait and see. All right. To present item one for us, we have our first selectman. Is Fred Camillo there?
Yes, I am, Tom. Thank you.
All right, Fred.
Thank you. Resolve that Section 9-5 of Chapter 9, Waste and Litter, Article 1, waste collection and disposal of the Code of Ordances of the town of Greenwich is amended as follow, as follows. The item is as it appears on your call.
Thank you very much. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution?
So moved.
The resolution on item one has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this? We'll begin with Lucia Jansen, Chair of our Budget Overview Committee.
Tom, I don't know if you want to consider the BOC first, since we were not assigned the item and finance and DPW were. I'm happy to take it up.
Well, we'll just go in alphabetical order. I know, I know the other committees have motions addressed to it, but why don't you just give your report? We'll get all the reports. I know District 11 is also reporting, and then we'll take up what they have to offer one by one.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you, Tom. Well, given the potential impact to the fiscal year 21 budget, I personally, Lucia Jansen, conducted a mini-benchmarking research study on tipping fees, which is the essence of this ordinance. And this benchmark study was the document that was read in advance to the BOC meeting and the basis for our discussion at the BOC meeting. We had heard at the BET budget meeting that of 169 municipalities, all but a few municipalities had tipping fees. Greenwich was one of the few municipalities without a tipping fee. I personally, Lucia Jansen, wanted to gather empirical data on the immediate surrounding towns to learn more, including the market rate for those tipping fees. My research grew larger and more complex as I learned the changing dynamics... as I learned the changing dynamics of waste, which is another word for garbage, and recycling, the trends, and what was occurring in that marketplace. So this report was circulated among the BOC members. I also sent it to other committee chairs that were referred this item. BOC members were asked to share their questions and perspectives in advance prior to the BOC meeting. Without a tipping fee ordinance, again, without a tipping fee ordinance, we have a $3.7 million hole in the fiscal year 21 town budget. That was the most top motivation for taking on this empirical research study. With no tipping fees, taxes will increase greatly without spending cut offsets. And those offsets are out of the operating budget, not capital budget. What we learned, what I learned, is that tipping fees are universal among all contiguous neighboring towns to Greenwich, including Porchester, New York, and Stamford, Connecticut. The resident holly permit fees, if implemented, should be market rate. So the permit fees for identification, there is an identification component, and then there is a fee component. The fee component is not common, and the range was from $5 to $40. There was much discussion among BOC members with the results of the study and the impact to the fiscal year 21 budget. I did point out the reality of what happens without this tipping fee ordinance, and much was discussed. We also had heard that the Finance Committee had voted to suspend the RTM rules to approve the tipping ordinance with a single read. We also heard that Public Works Committee had voted to approve the tipping ordinance with some amendments. The BOC took a vote on the tipping fee ordinance as presented on the call. The vote was 11-0-1 with District Eight abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mike Basham, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We took up the ordinance, and the delegate from District Eight made a motion to refer this item to a subcommittee that would study the costs and benefits of various waste management solutions available to the town and provide a recommended approach and a graph of an ordinance to implement their recommendation no later than September of 2020. That motion failed to receive a second. Another motion was made and was seconded for the Finance Committee to approve a motion requesting an RTM vote to suspend the rules requiring a second reading of item one. Since the BET budget decision was scheduled for the following Monday, April 27th, it was, if we felt it was important that the RTM vote on item one, a revenue ordinance, prior to the 27th, so the BET could prepare a balanced budget in an informed and timely manner. Motion was made, seconded, and the vote was 11-0-1 with District Eight abstaining. And at the appropriate time, it will make that motion to suspend the rules.
Thank you very much. Kip Bergweger, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
We met last Monday night. Present was the first selectman, Fred Camillo, who presented the item. We also had Commissioner of Public Works, Amy Seaver, Heather Smirignio, the Tanks Collector, BET members Karen Fass, Suleiotis, and Beth Crummick. We also had a team from the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, their Sustainable Materials Management, Jennifer Waymoth and Chris Nelson, and Kristen Brown of Waste Zero. Mr. Camillo had noted that although he had originally started with the Pay As You Throw program, he was persuaded that in the urgent need to fill the budget gap, that tipping fee would be the way to go. He had said that municipalities surrounding Greenwich charged tipping fees ranging from $95 to $125 per ton. He anticipated that Greenwich would be $112 per ton. The haulers would pay the fee and pass them on to the customers. The employees of Deep and Waste Zero presented a PowerPoint presentation comparing the benefits and drawbacks of pay-as-you-throw and tipping fees and the efficacy of both, and comparing them to our current system in Greenwich. Questions followed their presentation. By the way, a link to that, to the recording of their presentation has been circulated among Legislative and Rules members and hopefully to their districts. We were urged not to delay action on this item. A motion was made and seconded to amend the ordinance by adding in the second paragraph not to exceed $25 per household. That was approved by a vote of 10-1-1. District 11 voting no, and District 2 abstaining. Another motion was to add the words after each of the two new paragraphs and the representative town meeting. That failed to pass by a vote of 6 to 6 to 0. Our vote on legal order as amended was 12-0-0. And on the merits as amended was 9 to 2 to 1. But Districts 3 and 11 voting no, and District 4 abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before I go to Michael Spilow, I do want to announce the vote on item number four. That was the Tax Deferment Program. You're not gonna believe this vote. 225 to 2. 225 in favor, 2 opposed, none abstaining. I don't vote. That's a total of 228 out of 230. Definitely. Very exciting. All right. Continuing, so that item four has carried. Continuing with the reports on item number one. Michael Spilow, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll try not to repeat what came before. We were joined by the first selectmen, BET members Erickson and Drake, and Mason, RTM member Tom Camelius, who runs a refuse-falling service, and DPW Commissioner Seabird, and Chris Nelson of Connecticut Deep, and Kristen Brown of Waste Zero. We heard from the BET first. The current budget, proposed budget, includes a provision for $2.7 million in pay-as-you-throw fees. Based on the pay-as-you-throw program, the current budget includes a reduction of $834,000 for waste removal and an increase of 1.1 million in fees for recycling for a net increase of about $317,000. We were told that if we remove the pay-as-you-throw assumptions, the cost of waste removal services would be up about $500,000 to $700,000 over last year, potentially as much as $900,000 due to increased costs of recycling and the lack of volume reduction projected by the pay-as-you-throw consultants from Waste Zero. The proposed tipping fee would presumably cover the $2.7 million gap caused by the removal of the pay-as-you-throw program. But this $2.7 million is above the additional cost for waste removal. BET members indicated they have not yet had a chance to review the budget and would not say why they needed that much additional revenue over last year. We heard from Tom Camelius, a local hauler, who brought to our attention an online petition signed by a number of people suggesting that we do not implement the tipping fee. We heard from Selectman Camillo. As you heard, he did not feel that pay-as-you-throw had broad enough support and felt it needed more time, but expressed commitment to pay-as-you-throw as a program. In discussion, the Public Works Committee considered three motions. The first was to limit tipping fees to waste removal costs averaged over three years. Discussion on this motion revolved around whether it would provide sufficient revenues, but since current removal fees are nearly $6 million and tipping fees are filling the pay-as-you-throw gap of $2.7 million, this shouldn't be a concern. We also considered whether those opposed to tipping fees should vote for or against this amendment with the notion that if you are opposed to tipping fees, you might still want these fees limited to costs in the event the motion, the tipping fee, should pass. In the end, we voted on the motion to amend restricting the tipping fees to cost 12-0-0. And at the proper time, Mr. Moderator, I'll make, I'll make that motion. We then took up a motion to refer the tipping fees to an RTM subcommittee, which was to opine on tipping fees and other waste management options by September. This motion failed 5-7-0. We also took up a motion to refer the item back to the selectmen. The principal proponent of that second motion to refer was interested in having the RTM as a whole choose between pay-as-you-throw and tipping fees, requesting that the selectmen bring back And then we voted on the items appears on the call, and that failed 6-6-0. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We have one final report. District 11 took this up and took some action on it. Susan Fahey, Chair of District 11.
Good evening, fellow RTM members, BET members, the first selectmen, Board of Education members, and guests. District 11 discussed the entire call, but spent about an hour and a half on this item. As usual, we had our spirited and opinionated conversations. They were very many different varying views, which I'll touch on just a few in the interest of time. There were those who felt or insisted that we should be cutting the budget in other places to cover the increase in waste disposal. There was a comment that we should have a specific line item for waste removal, as we did, we do for the sewers. There's, there were those who wanted to understand how we pivoted from pay-as-you-throw to tipping fees in three short months. And some noted about other towns and tippy fees and felt we should just adopt them. There were some bigger financial questions that are looming over our head, and should we be just be passing through this ordinance? And yet, others want to evaluate the waste management in its totality, including our single-stream recycling and what will happen to our recyclables with the pay-as-you-throw idea? Or on the tipping fees, are outside haulers so large that our actual collection of fees will be too low? I myself added that I thought in these unprecedented times, it was our fiduciary responsibility as the store to the town to give both pay-as-you-throw, tipping fees, and even other ideas brought forth in our District 11 meeting to much fuller look. There were many who were concerned with the unintended consequences of these options. Yet the one thing everyone agreed on was that we needed to fill this roughly $5 million hole. A motion was discussed and brought forth to add a sunset clause of 18 months to the tipping fee so we could pass it tonight and move it toward the BET and move forward their budget. We also had this in the same exact motion, and important to note that we put a line that the first selectman would put together a working committee representing varying points of views and invite even those with views of outside the box to gather and explore the pluses and minuses of all types of waste management options for our town. This motion passed 12-10-0. And what we voted on says, District 11 is making a motion to amend the language of item one to include a sunset clause of 18 months to end October 31st, 2021, and to recommend to the first selectman that he form a committee with varying points of view to review the town's waste management options. The vote was 12 in favor, 10 against. I can offer the language inappropriate, but those who voted against it were voting for mostly those reasons stated above. And those that voted yes felt in general it made the most sense to plug the hole tonight, to move the BET forward, and to have RTM members give input over this very important ordinance over a proper period of time to dig deeper as we are all elected to serve our citizens. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So we have now heard that we have four motions directed to item number one. We have the Legislative and Rules motion to amend and cap a household tipping fee. We are going to take that up first. That'll be followed by the Public Works motion to add language about how the tipping fee is arrived at. We'll then take up the District 11 sunset clause. And last of the four, we'll go to the Finance Committee motion to suspend the rules to waive the second reading requirement. So at this point, Kip Bergweger, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, I move on behalf of the Legislative and Rules Committee that in the following, these second new paragraph set forth in the call, which is the fee for individuals depositing waste that the town, town dumped, provided by the words that the language be added not to exceed $25 per household.
All right. That being offered on behalf of our Legislative and Rules Committee, it does not require a second. I'm going to call for a discussion on this motion to amend. I, I note that we have a number of people signed up, some specifically for the motions to amend, some to address the item generally. I remind all of our speakers that we have a two-minute limit in effect for everyone except the proponent, who is our first selectman, Fred Camillo, and the principal proponent, who would be Tom Camelius. So I am going to first call on the speakers who signed up for the particular motion that we are dealing with. If anyone else wants to address that motion, you know, we can, we'll, we'll see how that proceeds. So I have four, I have four names. The first one is Ally Giorgi. Pardon me if I mispronounce. To be followed by Brian Rainey. So Ally Giorgi has the floor, and...
Point of order, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Spilow? Mr. Spilows, please state your point of order. I can't hear Mr. Spilow. Is Mr. Spilow speaking?
Yes, sir.
I, I did not hear it.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator. It looks like... Will we not have a principal proponent and principal opponent for each of the motions?
No. No, we won't. All right. The proponent of, of this motion is the Legislative and Rules Committee, and we just heard the report of that. All right. So Ally Giorgi has the floor to be followed by Brian Rainey.
Ally Giorgi, could you please unmute yourself and, and state your name?
Have you looked, could, and let me ask this. I forgot to mention this. If, if the name I call is not a panelist, but an attendee, it would help if you could raise your hand when your name is called so that we can locate you more easily.
Okay. Ally, could you please state your name?
Hi. Ally Giorgi, and I'm gonna waive my time.
All right. Thank you. Brian Rainey to be followed by Janet McMahon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Brian Rainey, District 9. I was one of the folks who offered this amendment in Legislative and Rules. I think the, the intent was fairly obvious that $75 seemed onerous in the original proposal. Mr. Lewis suggested a number of $25. I was happy with that. And my small contribution was per household so that we do not have to have multiple fees per person, per family, per household. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Janet McMahon to be followed by Allison Walsh.
Janet, would you please state your name?
Janet McMahon, District 8. I'm gonna waive my time as well.
Thank you. Allison Walsh, District 3. You could raise your hand, please.
Allison, could you please unmute yourself and state your name?
Allison Walsh, District 3.
Go ahead.
So I voted for this amendment in Legislative and Rules, and the more I've thought about it, the more I think that, as with all of the rest of the debate tonight about tipping fees... fees, or pay-as-you-throw, or more time, I think it's really important for us to consider all of this more carefully. District 3 has a lot of traffic at Holly Hill already. $25 is great per family if you only go once a month. I think maybe if we want to reduce municipal solid waste the way that we really should, and in the fashion that is called for by the municipal solid waste problem, which we are really called to solve here, then we should be considering maybe what kind of use do you want? Do you want a $25 permit for once a month? Do you want a $75 permit for once, for four times a month? These are the types of things that you just cannot decide in one evening with a gun to your head in terms of deciding municipal solid waste problems. And I do want to say District 3 is really concerned about the traffic that, and, and nobody's considered the ramifications for all of that. And that's again, the reason why we have to wait, I think, to discuss this further and, and discuss it in May. Thank you.
Further discussion on the Legislative and Rules Committee Motion to Amend Item 1. All right, seeing none, will the district chairs, Craig, could we get that next slide, please? Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Legislative and Rules Committee Motion to Amend Item 1. You see the language that they are proposing to add at the bottom there? And proceed to poll your delegation. Could you start that clock, please? All right. I see our five-minute period has expired, so the voting cards hopefully are on their way to our town clerk. I, I promise I will not call for another vote before we get the result of the pending The next, the next motion we will take up is the Public Works Committee Motion, Mr. Spilow, Chair of Public Works. I, I don't know, is Mr. Spilow speaking?
He needs to unmute himself.
Very sorry about that. Mr. Moderator, Public Works moves to add the following language to Item 1 after the current Paragraph 2. The tipping fees shall be set so that the expected total revenues from the tipping fees do not exceed the average of the prior three years annual difference of, A, the fees paid by the town for removal of all solid waste from the town disposal area, less B, any revenues received for recyclable solid waste in the same fiscal year. The tipping fees can be changed at most once a year and only as part of the budget process of the Board of Selectmen.
All right, that being offered on behalf of our Public Works Committee, it does not require a second. I will, I do have a slide with that language, so before we vote, I will put that slide up, but I assume the Public Works Committee report was distributed to our members, so I will refrain from doing that now. Discussion on the Public Works Committee Motion to Amend Item 1. Now, once again, I have, I have a list of speakers who did indicate a desire to speak on this motion, and I will work, I will work through that list in the first instance. And, and by the way, if our First Selectman desires to speak on this, or, or any other town official who may not have signed up, please let us know, and we will, we will give you the floor. All right, the first speaker will be Cheryl Moss of District 8 to be followed by Ali Giorgi.
Hi, Mr. Moderator, I waive my time.
Thank you. Ali Giorgi to be followed by Dan Ozzas, Mayor.
Ali, could you please raise your hand? Please unmute yourself.
Hi, it's Ali Giorgi, and I waive my time.
All right. Dan Ozzas, Mayor, to be followed by Mark Fichtel.
Thank you, this is Dan Ozzas, Mayor, District 5. First, I'd like to say that the Public Works motion, I think the intent of it is excellent. I think what the concern Public Works and, and what should be a concern is that the fees would be set in a way that would not reflect the cost of waste disposal and would be an arbitrary fee designed to raise revenue well in excess of the cost, and clearly, I don't believe that is the intent. My concern with the motion is that it's backward-looking, if permitted, in, in the sense that it's a three-year backward-looking average. In the case of Greenwich today, we know what the cost will be. We have a contract with City Carding, and, and I believe, and I think we should ask the town administrator to confirm this, is that the tipping fee is set at the actual cost of our contract. So I think that a motion like this should be on the base, based upon the expected cost in the ensuing fiscal year as opposed to backward-looking. I also believe that I would like to get some feedback from the town attorney in terms of, are there any state statutes that currently limit or put a box around how fees can be set? And, and I think that would be informative to the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's take up that question addressed to the Law Department. I did see some communication on that issue is, so anyone in the Law Department, I know Amina Ahmad is here, Assistant Town Attorney, is Vin Marino here? And would either of you care to respond to that question? Is, is Vin Marino here? Is he on the panel?
Mr. Moderator, yes, yes, I am. I believe Amina had looked into that issue and should be able to respond.
Thank you. Amina Ahmad?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. This is Amina Ahmad from the Law Department. Yes, we have been asked to look into this question by the Office of the First Selectmen and the Town Administrator, and the question that was posed to us, which I think is somewhat similar to what Mr. Ozzas, Mayor, has asked, is are there any state statutes which limit, place a limit on how fees can be set? And a related question we had been asked was, is there something in the state statutes which states whether the fees that are set have to be reasonable in some way? So based on our research, the general concept of any type of fees assessed by municipalities or by state agencies, the general concept is that they have to be reasonable. And in, in determining what is reasonable, one could look at the purpose for which the fees are being set. One could also get input from the town officials who are most familiar with the, the proposed fee and the reason and the rationale behind proposing a certain fee. So the concept of a reasonable fee exists in the state statutes, but there is no particular limit in terms of what a fee should be, other than the state statute saying they have to be reasonable. And again, one looks at what I just mentioned, you know, why is the fee being proposed? And what is the input you're getting from town officials as to why a certain fee is being proposed, and what is the backup information for that? As far as specifically tipping fees go, again, we were not able to find anything in the state statutes that put a specific limit on tipping fees. Again, in general, there's this concept of fees being reasonable.
Thank you very much. All right, our next speaker is Mark Fichtel, to be followed by Brian Rainey.
Mark, could you please unmute yourself and state your name?
Mark Fichtel, I live in District 4, I'm not a member of the RTM. I definitely agree with all the points that Dan Ozzas, Mayor, raised with regard to not looking backward, but looking to the current year, because we do know what our costs are going to be. More importantly, it seems very, it does not seem right that we would deduct the revenues that we have received in the past for recyclables, since we will not only not be receiving those revenues in the future, but we will be paying to get rid of our recyclables. So if anything, that portion of the proposed, of the proposal should be dropped.
All right. Brian Rainey to be followed by Mike Basham.
Thank you, I waive my time, the point's already been made.
Thank you. Mike Basham to be followed by Carl Higbee.
Mr. Moderator, I waive my time, my points have already been made.
Thank you. Carl Higbee to be followed by Janet McMahon.
Carl Higbee? I don't see him in the attendees.
Mr. Higbee, can you raise your hand?
Oh, there he is. Please unmute yourself and state your name.
Carl Higbee, D8. So, you know, I've, I've been going back and forth, a lot of people on this whole thing, tipping fees, pay-as-you-throw, and we've been debating this expansion of government for months now. It was on, it was off, it was on, it was off, and I, I just want to kind of go into the, the simple fact that when we, if we decide to go forward to the vote on this, that pay-as-you-throw and tipping fees, they generate about the same amount of revenue. The only difference is with pay-as-you-throw, you're going to spend 15% of that going right to a private company, waste zero, tipping fees, 100% of that goes to the town, period. There's less administration involved in it, the town's getting more money, and we're not get, you know, throwing it on fire, giving it to someone else. We've, people who are in favor or against this have both said, well, we need more time to think about it, but we've been thinking about this for three months, and this is exactly why people hate government, is because we take forever to do something. We just need to put it to a vote. If you haven't done any research in two or three months on this, you're not going to. So let's just take it to a vote, put this issue to bed, and move on to the next thing that can help us get out of this coronavirus thing. I think, you know, the biggest thing with tipping fees is, you know, pay-as-you-throw, you don't have a choice, you have to buy $2 bags with tipping fees, you have the choice. If your hauler wants to jack up your rate to $200 a month, fine, you can take your own trash to the, the dump. And I think that's the most important part here, is giving people the freedom of choice. So it's, it's a matter of, do you want government to run your life and tell you what bags to buy in a town that ironically, you know, banned plastic bags a year ago? It seems ridiculous, so I yield the rest of my time.
All right, thank you. I remind our speakers, when we are dealing with motions to amend, the debate is limited to that particular motion. We are currently debating the Public Works Motion to Add Language, which would govern what the, how the tipping fee is set and what formula is used. Before, before I call on Janet McMahon, who was the next speaker, before I forget, we do have the result of the vote on the Legislative and Rules Committee Motion to Amend by adding that $25 cap on household fees. Those in favor, 135, opposed, 88, abstaining, 3. That item, that motion to amend has carried. That item, that motion to amend has carried. All right, continuing with discussion now on the Public Works motion to amend by adding language which would govern how the tipping fee is set. Janet McMahon, to be followed by Doreen Pearson.
Janet McMahon, please unmute yourself and state your name.
Hi, Janet McMahon from District Eight. I actually do not have any comment on this particular motion, and I would like to waive my time for a separate motion.
Thank you. Doreen Pearson, to be followed by Allison Walsh. Oh, all right, yeah, go ahead. Doreen Pearson, District Seven.
Yes, Doreen, please unmute yourself and state your name.
Doreen Pearson, District Seven. However, I have nothing to add to this particular motion.
All right, Allison Walsh, to be followed by Quentin Pearson.
All right, please unmute yourself and state your name.
Allison Walsh, District Three. It's been pointed out that this is not going to work because we don't know what tipping fees will be until the year in which they're assessed. So capping in at the last year isn't going to work. It's, it's going to leave a budget hole. Thank you.
Quentin Pearson, District Seven.
I see Doreen and Tag Pearson. Oh, there, Doreen Pearson's hand is raised again, just, I'll let her speak. Doreen? Please unmute yourself and state your name.
Doreen Pearson. It was my husband, Tag Pearson. This was not some, this was not, nothing that we were prepared to address, the motion.
Okay, I, I was given the wrong name, I'm sorry. All right. Craig, could we put the next slide up, please? I'm calling for the vote now. The, the slide will explain what the vote is. I will orally review it. This is the Public Works motion to amend to add the following language. This, in essence, would become the third paragraph of Section 9.5. And this essentially provides guidelines as to how the tipping fee is set. There are expenses minus revenues for recyclable waste, and you take an average over three years. If you are in favor of that language, you should vote yes. If you are opposed to adding that language, you should vote no. All right. Let's start the clock.
Language this afternoon from the town attorney. As to what we were able to do, and let me just pull that up because it came late this afternoon from Alexis. So the language that we would read would be. The second and third and fourth paragraphs of this section. Shall cease to be effective on October thirty first, two thousand and twenty one. Unless sooner extended by the action of the representative town meeting. In addition, is recommended that the first selectmen form an advisory committee. With varying points of view to review the town's waste management options. And so that is our proposed amendment. Could you hear that? Hello?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm unmuting myself. All right, thank you very much. We do have speakers who have signed up now. I remind, I remind our. Our members that there was a two minute total limit on item number one, so those who have used up their time, I will not call on as we go forward here. You know, some people have waived their time, so we will begin with Margaret Heppleman. To be followed by Ally Giorsey, who has waived her time so far. Margaret Heppleman, District eleven.
I'll waive my time.
Thank you. Ally Giorsey to be followed by Brian Rainey.
I'll wave as well, thank you.
Thank you. Ally Giorsey.
Ally.
Hi, hi, Ally Giorsey here. I will waive my time as I'd like to speak to another item, an item.
All right. Mike, Mike Warner to be followed by Michael Basham.
Mike, please unmute yourself and state your name.
I'll waive my time.
Mike Basham to be followed by Joanna Swamley.
I'm going to waive my time, I won't be allowed to speak on one amendment.
All right. Joanna Swamley to be followed by Janet McMahon.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I waived my time. Joanna Swamley from D ten.
Janet McMahon to be, Janet McMahon.
Janet, please unmute yourself and state your name.
Hi, Janet McMahon from D eight, and I'm waiving my time as well.
All right. Craig, can you put up that next slide, please?
Is John Eddy, did John Eddy have something to say?
Hang on. All right, you want to unmute John Eddy?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, can you hear me?
Yes.
I have a point of information. With this amendment, what happens, what does the ordinance refer revert to if the sunset clause takes place and the RTM is not acted?
All right, actually. You just reminded me, we're not going to, we're not going to vote on this until I have the vote on, on the Public Works Committee. So I'm sorry, could you repeat your question, Mr. Eddy?
Thank you. My question was that if we have a sunset clause and the RTM has failed to act. By the time the sunset clause date, October thirty first, two thousand and twenty one comes into. To view, what does the ordinance revert to, or does it revert to something if the RTM is not acted? By that period of time, does it revert back to the town collecting? Funds for waste management through the taxes, or does it?
Yes, yes, the answer is. The answer is it would be as it is today.
Thank you.
Now that, that question assumes nothing would replace. If, if we adopt this tipping fee at some point. If that sunset date arrives. And nothing has been done, it would revert to what we currently have right now.
Thanks again.
All right. Were there any other, any other questions?
Um, I see that Donald Wykos hand is raised. I know he was having some issues with the before.
No, we're, we're, he told us that was involuntary.
Okay.
All right, I do have, I do have the result of the vote. On the Public Works motion. Those in favor, thirty two, opposed, one ninety three, abstaining, two. The motion to amend has failed. All right, we now have. We now have a, I'm going to call for the vote on the sunset clause. Craig, could you put that next slide up, please?
Tom, it's a sunset clause, and it's also to create a committee.
Correct. So this is the language, it's now up on the screen. The, the first part of it now. Since the Public Works motion did not, did not pass, there are only. Two paragraphs that need to be referenced. This says the second, third, and fourth, well. It's really just the second and third now, because there was no additional paragraph added. Through the motion to amend by Public Works. So that's, that's the first part of this, the sunset of October thirty one of two thousand and twenty one. There is a second part that recommends that the first selectmen form an advisory committee. So if you are in favor of this motion, you vote yes. If you are opposed to it, you vote no. All right, let's start the clock. All right. We have, we have the five minute period having expired. The card should be en route to our Assistant Town Clerk. At this point, all that remains now. I'm sorry, no, we have the finance, we have the Finance Committee motion to suspend the rules. Our, this being a proposed ordinance would, by rule. Come back at our next meeting for a second reading. We can suspend that rule. But a motion to suspend the rules requires a two thirds majority. Now, I see. I, I'm going to acknowledge that. Under Robert's rules, a motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, but this is an issue that requires debate, and we have a list of speakers. Who have signed up, so we are going to debate this issue. The first speaker is Lucy Von Brockel. To be followed by Svetlana Wasserman. Lucy Von Brockel.
Hi, Lucy Von Brockel, District four. I urge people to vote against waiving the second read on this. Clearly, there are a lot of open questions and concerns about. Tipping fees, and this is why we put the rule in place in the first place. In order to make a responsible, informed decision on this issue, which has become pretty controversial and confusing. I think we definitely need to have a second read. And that we need at least another month to complete our due diligence on this. And I also think we need the opportunity to explore other options available to us, like pay as you throw, or doing neither. Rushing to make a change on this. Has something that has significant budget implications is ill advised in any circumstance, and I believe we have the time to manage this. And we should definitely take that time. And be cautious. Thank you.
Thank you. Svetlana Wasserman to be followed by Rachel Kanna.
Svetlana, could you raise your hand? I don't see a Svetlana in the audience. Thank you. Please unmute yourself and state your name.
Svetlana Wasserman, District ten. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. The RTM, we all are facing intense pressure tonight to approve tipping fees. But there are a lot of questions, key questions, that are still unanswered. For example, the real operational and capital cost to the town of tipping fees. Traffic congestion at Holly Hill. What consumer protections will exist to prevent consumers from getting gouged by haulers? And the impact to struggling residents and businesses when it gets implemented in the midst of a pandemic on July first. The Public Works Committee sent a long list of questions to the Department of Public Works about tipping fees. And we haven't received a response to those questions. We have a second read requirement to make sure that the RTM has all the information it needs to make an informed decision. Because we haven't had these key questions answered about implementation of tipping fees. We should not waive the requirement for a second read. A second read in May will not impact the BET's ability to adopt its budget in June. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Kanna to be followed by Ally Giorsey.
Rachel, could you please raise your hand? State your name, please, and unmute yourself.
Rachel Kanna, District ten.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, fellow RTM members. Some in this body will have you believe that implementing tipping fees are critical to make. Up the town's budgetary shortfall of three point seven million dollars. And will lead to an increase in taxes and the town's mail rate. However, this ordinance is being considered in haste and without. The ability to assess the totality of options available to the town of Greenwich and taxpayers, both in terms of waste management and budgetary considerations. The town has. Created an alternative waste management solution that will fill this budget gap. And the RTM should be allowed to consider both options side by side before making a decision that will have long term consequences. On what residents pay for waste removal. The current situation with the COVID nineteen pandemic and the resulting economic downturn should make us even more prudent about the decisions we. Make on behalf of the town at this time. We need to be especially protective of those in our communities, community who are in need. Therefore, I urge you to vote against the amendment to waive the second read of the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Ally Giorsey to be followed by Bruce Flug.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator and fellow RTM members. Most members have not had the time to educate themselves on the economic consequences that Connecticut's aging waste disposal infrastructure. Will have on taxpayers. In order for us to make the fiscally responsible decision on item one. It is important that we understand the waste crisis in Connecticut. All waste in Connecticut is sent to incineration as there are no remaining landfills. All five of the state's facilities are past their thirty year life expectancy. Connecticut's primary incinerator in Hartford, which takes one third of all the state's waste, is expected to close in five years. Building a new facility or rebuilding the Hartford Incinerator will cost taxpayers nearly five hundred million dollars. And no one wants a new incinerator in their hometown. They are detrimental to public health and our environment. Affecting air and soil quality, and they disproportionately impact low income communities. I urge you all to please vote against the amendment to suspend the rule requiring a second read of item one. And give the RTM the opportunity to educate ourselves on the broader issues we face. So we can make an informed vote on tipping fees and other viable options in May. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, before I call on the next speaker. I do have the result of the vote on the District eleven sunset and suggested advisory committee. Those in favor of the motion one fourteen, opposed, one oh nine, abstaining, one. That District eleven motion has carried. All right, continuing with. Discussion on the Finance Committee motion to spend the rules. Bruce Flug. To be followed by Myra Clockenbrink.
Bruce, please unmute yourself and state your name.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Bruce Flug, District five. I'm in favor of the motion to suspend the rules requiring a second reading of item one. I believe could be voted on at tonight's meeting. Item number one is first and foremost a budget issue. As members of the RTM, we have a responsibility to address this in a timely manner. The BET. Decision day is Monday, April twenty seventh. Believe that it is imperative that we vote on item one tonight as a final read. So that the BET has a clear signal of the RTM's intentions. Thank you.
Thank you. Myra Clockenbrink to be. To be followed by Marita Hamry.
Myra, please unmute yourself and state your name. Myra?
Are you able to locate her?
Yeah, she's there. I've, I've unmuted her, but she's not speaking.
We cannot hear you. Can you unmute yourself, please?
She is unmuted. She should be able to talk. There could be something wrong with her microphone. I'm, I'm not sure.
All right, why don't we move on? We'll come back if there was a technical problem. Marita Hamry to be followed by Andrew Winston.
Okay, Marita, please unmute yourself and state your name.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Marita Hamry from District ten. While I appreciate the District eleven's motion to try and get more information and to allow us to deliberate over all of the proposals over the next year and a half. The choice of how we pay for our solid waste disposal will have long term consequences once we implement. One method. So once, if we adopt tipping fees tonight, it will not be easy to reverse should we decide to switch to, to another option. Once haulers have raised their rates. To account for tipping fees, it will not be easy to get them to reverse those increases if we decide to switch to another option such as pay as you throw. During the fuel crisis, they added a fuel surcharge which stayed on for years and years until it was simply incorporated into their regular rates. Also, once we spend money to overhaul Holly Hill, that is a sunk cost. We should not rush into a vote for tipping fees until we've had the ability to review all options on the table and may make a deliberative. Solid decision as the RTM is intended to do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Andrew Winston to be followed by Michael Basham.
Andrew Winston, please unmute yourself.
Hi, Andrew Winston, D twelve. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The, this policy that we put in place to allow for a second read, I think, was put here for this purpose when we have. Larger issues that have large expense and spending ramifications. I, I kind of didn't understand why we put this place and then be able to waive it. It, it's so we can look at multiple options. I think we heard earlier, and a very good point, that we should be looking forward and not back. And going forward, we know we're going to have more and more waste problems. So this isn't just a budget issue. Alone, it's a waste handling issue which then has budget ramifications for years. So I think we need to understand the options we have in front of us. And compare them when we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Basham. To be followed by Hector Arzino.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First, what, what I'd like to do is address the assertion that was made earlier today by the proponents of pay as you throw. They. Sent out a memo saying that pay as you throw would be a cheaper alternative for the town. And what I did is I reviewed the BET's numbers they use to evaluate. And I think it's pretty clear to me anyway that the consultants assumptions are based on. Changes in the town's solid waste and recyclables that are not really realistic. Not only in a normal environment, but even more so in the current one. They also sort of ignore the fact that we are experiencing increasing costs. You dispose of our single stream recyclables, recyclables, because the Chinese who are buying. Most of the world's, at least fifty percent of the world's single, single, single stream recyclables have stopped buying those. So this has led to a supply, demand imbalance. And our institutions here in North America really are not in a position to take up that, or process that additional supply. So the cost of, of our recycling is going up. We made money, seventy five thousand dollars in FY nineteen. We're only making about five thousand dollars this year. Next year, we're estimated to lose almost a million, and it'll be as close to a million three, two or a million three in the following year. So we're in very uncertain times, you know, the severity and duration of this pandemic are uncertain, and, and this kind of. Unique economic environment. I don't think it's practical to adopt a waste disposal plan that. Will only add additional layers of financial uncertainty to those that we already confront. What I like to do is quote the BET Democrats' February twenty sixth letter. To the Greenwich Free Press, where they say virtually every Connecticut municipality aside from Greenwich. Charges trash haulers a tipping fee to cover waste removal costs. Adopting such a fee structure would provide an alternative revenue source to the town. So because tipping fees are so widely used, they'll be easy to implement, and they, they will be a proven reliable source of revenue for the town. They'll also serve to eliminate any concerns that Greenwich is subsidizing the. The disposal of other towns' waste because we have no tipping fee. So as a result, I would encourage the RTM to vote to suspend the rules and take this issue up tonight.
Thank you. All right. Hector Arzino, and I see Mr. Rainey, do you have a question?
Point of information for Mr. Mason.
Please state your point of information through the chair.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to know from Mr. Mason, what not approving this ordinance tonight. What impact that would have on the BET and their schedule and, and budget process?
All right, Mr. Mason, are you able to answer that question?
I can give you the alternatives. The BET will, when it sets the budget, sets revenues and expenses. And the BET will have a decision whether. To leave the anticipated revenues in or out. If we leave them in, then we're anticipating that revenue to come in. If the revenues do not come in because we don't do a tipping fee, we'll be forced, it'll create a hole which will either. Give the BET one of two choices. Raise taxes to cover the hole in the subsequent year, or use fund balance, or a blend of the two. It would be much better for the BET to have a, an understanding of what's coming in. Obviously, revenues are always estimates. Expenses are expenses. And the BET has not taken a formal position on this. We've had lots of discussions through the process. It started with the pay as you throw. It modified over to the pay as you tip. I think you can be assured that when we make a decision on the budget on the twenty seventh. We will, we will know our options and we will make a decision. So that's really, those are our options. We don't, we're, we don't have the luxury of any other real options.
Well, thank you for joining us tonight, Mr. Mason.
Tom, I've never seen two hundred and twenty seven RTM members vote. Congratulations.
Yeah, and, and two hundred and twenty eight are in attendance. All right. Hector Arzino to be followed by Duncan Burke.
Hector, please unmute yourself and state your name.
Yes, Hector Arzino, and I still believe that we have time to discuss in May. All the options that the town has for the management of the waste and not rush into decisions. I mean. I believe that the debate is, is there. We owe to ourselves to be well informed and not to rush into decisions. I think that the calendar had been extended. And I will vote against to suspend the rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Duncan Burke to be followed by Doreen Pearson. Duncan Burke of District two. Could you raise your hand, please?
I see Nancy Burke. I'm going to assume that that's the same person or related.
They are both members, so.
Okay, great. Okay. Nancy, please unmute yourself and state your name.
Thank you. This is Nancy Burke, but Duncan Burke is going to do the speaking.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I'm glad this works. I am, I am very impressed with the benchmarking study that Lucia Jansen did comparing. Almost every conceivable town in the state and how. Well, and how simple their tipping agenda works and. The Budget Overview Committee has done considerable analysis as has L and R and as. Has the Finance Committee, and I think in this, in this timeframe with what's going on in the world around us, you know, in terms of health and all the. You know, the terrible things that are going on in terms of. Many people dying or facing death and. The financial markets around us and the way revenues come into this town through taxes, whether it's commercial or. whether it's commercial or residential or transfer tax or whatever, I don't think we can predict anything very well that's going to happen right now. We hope to get through it and have life on the other side of this valley, something like we've known it to be. But I think right now, at this point in time, it's absolutely critical to go forward and give our BET a chance to do the best they can to plan for trash hauling. The Chinese are no longer buying our recyclables. You know, costs are going to go up. Lots of things will change. But I think that the option of tipping is clearly, you know, set forth the costs and the flexibility. We also have the sunset clause which
Ten seconds.
which gives us some protection to reconsider it in the future. The sunset clause gives us some of the option that we would have if we were to delay this. I recommend very strongly going forward to suspend the rules tonight. And thank you.
Thank you very much. Doreen Pearson, and then we're going to try Myra Klockenbrink again.
Doreen, please unmute yourself.
Thank you, Jenny. Doreen Pearson, District 7. I'd like to say that I'm in total agreement with every statement that Mr. Burke just presented. I'd also like to add that this has all been a wake-up call for me. Prior to this crisis year of burgeoning costs associated with waste management, no one in town ever voiced concern about the inordinate amounts of MSW dumped at Holly Hill. No one investigated or made comparisons to adjacent or surrounding communities all the way up the I-95 corridor. No one ever considered this an essential service or wanted to treat it as a utility, while all tax-exempt properties and organizations in town got a free pass and the taxpayers, whether residential or commercial, bore the cost of the Holly Hill facilities and its other associated costs. I think this investigation and the information that we've already been presented with, especially by Lucia Jansen and Mr. Fitchell, has been, should be a terrible eye-opener to everyone. It's time that we have tipping fees. We have been behind for years and years by giving haulers a free pass. I think that we should suspend and vote on this tonight. This entire thing is going to be a terrible burden for businesses and homeowners that are already suffering under the costs and the shortnesses in their budgets created by COVID-19. This is not a time to delay.
Thank you. Myra Klockenbrink, to be followed by Joanna Swamley.
Myra, please unmute yourself and state your name. I think Myra needs to unmute herself, but I, there we go.
There we go. Thank you. My name is Myra Klockenbrink. I do not support the motion to suspend the rule requiring a second read of item number one, tipping fees. RTM members deserve the time to educate themselves about both tipping fees and Pay as You Throw. Please vote down the motion, item 1A, and give the RTM the opportunity to vote on tipping fees and Pay as You Throw side by side in May. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Joanna Swamley, to be followed by Roger Clark.
Joanna, please unmute yourself.
Yes, hello. Joanna Swamley from District 10. I want to speak in opposition to the motion to suspend the rules. The town should have considered tipping fees long ago. Many of us wanted it to do so. However, it did not, and many things have changed that dramatically alter the landscape of our conversation tonight. There are at least three significant compelling and, in my view, dispositive reasons not to suspend the rules and to instead consider this item in May along with Pay as You Throw. One, we did not, despite what some have said, need to adopt the ordinance tonight. There is no April deadline. This issue can be addressed in May right alongside Pay as You Throw. There is a budget item with an amount next to it, and whether you adopt Pay as You Throw or tipping fees, the budget hole can be filled in a timely fashion. Two, this item has not been fully vetted, as the debate over the amendments make clear. Three, Pay as You Throw may be a better path forward for our town. It closes the same budget gap as tipping fees, and it reduces actual waste. We have a ticking time bomb going on with the waste disposal in the state, and we really need to consider this alternative. It is very bad governance for us to jump onto something there may be a better alternative to. I've listened to the deep presentation, and I was very impressed. If you haven't listened to it, I humbly suggest you shouldn't vote to dispense with a second read or vote for tipping fees tonight. It would be turning a blind eye to what may very well be a different and better system. Look at it this way. Tipping fees are like old rotary phones. They may have worked well back in the day. They may still work, but maybe an iPhone 12 would do a lot more stuff and be a much better product in 2020. Let's take a look at Pay as You Throw, the iPhone 12, before we make a decision to go with tipping fees, the old rotary phone. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger Clark, to be followed by David Snyder.
District 10. A tipping fee is simple to administer, and it requires virtually no burden on the public, unlike Pay as You Throw. We really don't need more plastic to have to be bought in this state.
Thank you. David Snyder, to be followed by Ross Moore.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
David Snyder, District 6. I am emphatically urging you to vote no to this item. Tipping fees, first off, I think there's a hybrid solution that probably will emerge if we're given the time to allow it to emerge. And this is why I don't want to be rushing into a vote on something that I actually disagree with. Tipping fees will exacerbate the financial hardships brought on by the pandemic. Tipping fees are scheduled to take effect on July 1st, just over two months from now. This gives little time for struggling residents and businesses to prepare for this new fee increase. And the interesting thing is, Pay as You Throw is easier to transition to because it would not begin until October 1st, and it would cost people less per month than the tipping fees that would be levied against them from their carriers. That's just one thing. I feel like we're being rushed into a vote that fills a budget hole and does nothing for the environmental issues that Pay as You Throw address. Thank you.
Thank you. Ross Moore, to be followed by Susan Fahy.
Okay, I see Beth Moore. We'll give that a shot. All right, Beth Moore, are you with Ross Moore?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, Jenny. It's Ross Moore on Beth Moore's device. So, I wanted to come out strongly in favor of suspending the rules. I believe that this issue has been around for a while. I don't think there's any new science coming out that's going to elucidate this issue for the RTM between now and next month. I think it would help the BET greatly. And I think that a lot of towns have dealt with this issue, and we've seen where they've come out on it. So, I strongly urge us to decide on this tonight because I firmly believe that if we table this issue, we're just going to end up in the same place in a month. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Fahy, to be followed by Janet McMahon.
Hi, it's Susan Fahy. So, I'm just a little confused based on the very narrow but winning margin of the vote from the District 11 motion. I mean, if it's clear that a lot of people want this to go through tonight, it's clear that a lot of people want to investigate this, and I don't think 30
Are you speaking, you're speaking on this motion to suspend the rules?
I am.
All right, go ahead.
I don't think that 30 days motion to suspend the rules for the second read is going to get us there. I think we've already agreed that 18 months is what we need. So, I just wanted to understand and suggest that we pass this tonight. We do not suspend the rules, and we give us 18 months to look at this in a clear, coherent manner. Thank you.
All right, just, I don't want anyone to be confused. I think you were saying you were in favor of suspending the rules. Is that correct? So that we could vote on it finally tonight?
We want to vote on it finally tonight, correct, to suspend the rules.
Okay. Janet McMahon, to be followed by Wynne McDaniel.
Janet, please unmute yourself.
Hi, Janet McMahon, District 8. I'd like to waive my time. I am against the
Thank you. Wynne McDaniel, to be followed by Elizabeth Dempsey.
Wynne, please unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. It's Wynne McDaniel, District 7. Good evening, Mr. Moderator and RTM members. I am speaking in support of this motion for two reasons. First, as a town, we will have significant impact to our overall budget due to the virus. There are a lot of knowns, but a lot of unknowns. The BET has a public meeting tomorrow, and all residents need to understand the budget implications for upcoming year. Tipping fees is an important topic, but it is not the only issue facing us as we deal with this impact of the crisis. Secondly, how many more emails, texts, and editorials do we need on the pros and cons? Nothing will change in a month. Let's get on with it so we can focus on the bigger issues facing our town at our May RTM meeting. I urge you all to support this motion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Dempsey, to be followed by Brian Mallon.
Elizabeth, please unmute yourself and state your name.
Hi, Elizabeth Dempsey. I'm a town resident. I ask that you vote no against the amendment suspending the second read on tipping fees. Our trash problems demand more than a rushed solution that taxes residents indiscriminately. We need a comprehensive, thoughtful solution that considers residential costs, nonprofit school costs, and commercial waste costs. For example, under the current system that we have now, as a property taxpayer, I subsidize the trash costs of many nonprofits in our town who don't pay taxes. While I welcome new solutions and am happy to pay for my share of new increased costs, I'd like to do so based upon the waste that I produce. I don't want a collective tax with tipping fees being passed to me in my trash bill. If we switch to tipping fees alone, how can the multitude of small-business haulers accurately account for the different volumes and trash between various residents or commercial customers? By approving tipping fees tonight, you are removing my freedom to pay only for what services I use. They say the trash removal is the last unmetered utility. A tipping fee by itself is an inaccurate, old-school, one-size-fits-all tool that, granted, we should have put in years ago. But now, we can and need to do better in the 21st century than simply passing fees to your constituents in an indiscriminate and unregulated fashion. Please vote no. Take a second read and ask for a more thoughtful, cost-conscious approach for the May call. Combining tipping fees potentially along with something such as Pay as You Throw would better reflect individual trash removal costs. Now more than ever, it's time for us to catch up and do a comprehensive evaluation of the entire waste picture in Greenwich. Thanks.
All right, our final speaker is Brian Mallon.
Brian, please unmute yourself and state your name.
Hi, this is Brian Mallon, District 9. And I support this item on the merits, but I'm going to confine my comments specifically to the Financial Committee's motion, which I also support. There's a hole in the budget today, and as others have already mentioned, we have a very limited time to make our intentions known to the bet so that they can get down to the business of, you know, coming up, setting our budget for the year. I think it's a very reasonable expectation that our economic and budgetary conditions in town are only going to deteriorate as this crisis drags on. I believe we need to go into this with the strongest budget possible if we're going to weather this storm. We need to let the bet know how we would like them to address some of these issues, specifically this hole in the budget around municipal solid waste. Tipping fees, I believe, is the fairest option that we can quickly and officially and efficiently implement. We've already amended it, so it sunsets. So, if we want to revisit it, we have to revisit it at a later time. That's pretty much been taken off the table. So, I mean, just letting it go on forever has been taken off the table. So, I believe we should just go ahead and get this done and fill that gap tonight. Thank you.
All right, Alexis Valgares.
Cheryl Moss would like to speak on this issue, please.
All right, Cheryl Moss.
Please unmute yourself and state your name.
Hi, this is Cheryl Moss, Chair District 8. Dear fellow RTM members, I do not support suspending the rules tonight to allow a vote on item one. We will not face a hole in the budget if the tipping fee ordinance is considered in May. There is no urgency as we have an extra month to consider the Pay as You Throw ordinance, which is also still in the budget and has been submitted in the May call by petition. We'll fill the same budget gap. As such, there's no urgency to vote on this item tonight. The RTM can look at both options side by side and choose either one at the May meeting. District 8, wanting to have the opportunity to look at both options, voted to bring Pay as You Throw to the RTM tonight, of which I will speak later, but please vote no. I reserve the remainder of my time. Thank you.
All right, Craig, can you put that slide up, please?
We have some other hands raised in the attendees list for people who were not on the speaker list.
Can you put that slide up, please? We're going to take a vote on this. Will the district chairs, please mark your voting cards. Finance Committee, motion to suspend the second reading requirement. This requires a two-thirds majority to pass. Now, the reason I'm cutting off debate, as you see what's on the slide, it is not debatable. We did waive that rule, but within reason. So, we are not debating it further. So, if you are in favor of voting on the merits of the tipping fee ordinance tonight, you should vote yes in favor of this motion to suspend the second reading. If you want this to come back in May and prevent a final vote tonight, you should vote no. All right, will members please cast their votes? Craig, could you please start the clock? All right. All right, we have, uh, reached the five-minute mark, so the voting cards should be on their way to our Assistant Town Clerk. Um, we will continue. Um, of course, if, if this motion fails, we will not take a final vote tonight, but we can continue to debate this. I will note that it appears we have about thirty-four speakers who have not used their time and, uh, have asked to speak in gen- to the item in general. So I will continue with discussion. I will offer the floor to Fred Camillo, uh, who is the proponent of this and would have five minutes, to be followed by Tom Cornelius, uh, who I will designate as the principal opponent. So our first selectman, Fred Camillo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I appreciate that. On December first, uh, the Board of Selectmen was sworn into office, knowing full well that we were going to be faced with an, an additional charge when it came to waste disposal. We knew that we had a three-point-seven-million-dollar bill for municipal solid waste, and up until now, we were not paying for recycling. In fact, at one time, we were getting seventeen dollars and fifty cents per ton. Then it went to nothing. And now we're looking at a sixty-five-dollar-per-ton charge, uh, this, this spring. So we were looking at, on, in addition to the three-point-seven-million-dollar charge, another nine-hundred-and-twelve-million dollars, nine-hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars this year, with that going up to one-point-two-million dollars next year. So it's almost five-million dollars. And so what I wanted to do was present the, uh, RTM and the town with a choice to debate. Uh, not just between tipping fees, which, uh, the BET had talked about for years, especially last year. And as Mike Basham said, uh, uh, the Democrats in the BET have been pushing for a while. Wanted to give them a choice, and we came up with pay-as-you-throw, which is in forty-three other states. We were presenting it, and we were told, um, by lots of municipalities in those forty-three states that, um, they love it, but it takes a while. One told us, I think it was Stonington, it took them eight months or ten months of thirty-six public hearings to get all these questions answered. So we knew we were up against it, time-wise. It became clear that the votes weren't there, and I respect that. And so, uh, even though we were gonna give it one more shot in April to go before the RTM committees to answer questions and see if, uh, people would be open to it, uh, we lost that chance with the pandemic. We are really facing a lot of uncertainty in the coming months, probably for up to two years. The one certain thing right now in front of us is tipping fees. We know what they are. It will plug a hole, and we're really in no position to be putting anything off right now. Uh, people are saying, well, where you come, where'd you come up with this one-twelve figure? Well, if you look at what our neighboring towns are charging, they're around one-ten, one-twelve. Uh, Portchester's at one-ten. You really don't wanna go below that, 'cause then you will invite, uh, the possibility of outside garbage coming in to Greenwich that would be paid for by our citizens. And then people say, what about this site access fee? Uh, I heard before, uh, one of our members say that, you know, it was a little bit steep. Well, uh, some research was done, and we found out that our neighboring towns were charging anywhere between ninety-five and one-twenty-five, I believe. So we thought seventy-five would be fair. It's not etched in stone. Um, you certainly could have a, a structure, fee structure, uh, certainly to address people maybe on, uh, a, a limited income or, or senior citizens. But there, you know, there's about thirty-six thousand tons of garbage coming down there, and, uh, forty-six hundred of that comes from residents. Meaning the haulers don't take, that forty-six hundred dollars is not generated or brought down to the, to the dump or the transfer station by the hauls. So at one-twelve, one-hundred-and-twelve dollars, that forty-six hundred, that comes to ninety-thousand dollars. Now, if you, if you timed, if you timed that by one-twelve, right, then you come to a little over five-and-a-half-million dollars, which we're not talking about. But the, the seventy-five-dollar fee would bring you to about ninety-thousand dollars. I think it's, you have to have something, some type of a site access fee. It's not fair to anybody that's paying for it now, that's gonna have to pay for it. Unless, let's face it, we pay for it now anyway in our taxes, but I don't think burying it in our taxes is, is an honest way to, to, to conduct government or to pay for services. So we offered a couple of choices, and now before us, it's tipping fees. And again, it's the one certainty that we have and we know of. Um, but I do think you have to have some, not for tonight, but, uh, we have to have a discussion on what that site access fee would be, because it's, it's only fear. And also, um, to the concerns about, uh, traffic in District Three, yeah, I'm very sensitive to that. My, half my family was from there, and, and I go down there a lot. I know it's, 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 uh, it's an issue, so certainly we have to deal with that. And we have to look at the traffic flow down there. I would have preferred myself a, uh, a per-car charge, like towns like, uh, Richfield have. But the way our, uh, dump, our transfer station is, uh, is configured right now, it, it just, it's not workable. So that's where those numbers came from. They weren't plucked out of thin air. A lot of thought is going into this, and, uh, right now, if we wanna keep our mill rate low and give the taxpayers a break and to pay for the services with a, a, a guaranteed fee, uh, source, uh, revenue, uh, something that is a certainty, this is it. And, uh, I have to agree with my colleagues, uh, both on the RTM and the BET, who think that, uh, putting this off i- is a big mistake. So again, I, I, I appreciate the debate tonight, and I thought there were many good points raised, and, uh, look forward to hearing the rest of the debate tonight. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
All right, thank you, uh, Mr. Camillo. Um, I, I thought I'm, I heard you talking about the, uh, household fee. I think I, I just wanna remind everybody, we did approve the Legislative and Rules cap on a household fee, twenty-five dollars. All right, I do have, I do have the result of the vote on the Finance Committee motion. Those in favor, one-thirty, opposed, ninety-two. That is a, uh, that is a total of two-hundred-and-twenty-two votes that were cast. Two-thirds of that number is one-forty-eight. So there were only a hundred-and-thirty yes votes. That motion has failed for lack of a two-thirds majority. So we will not, we will not be taking a final vote tonight on, uh, Item One. But we can continue to, uh, discuss this. Now, I mentioned, it's now eleven o'clock. We did adopt a motion to adjourn at, uh, twelve. Um, and I did mention that District Eight wanted to try and bring something before us tonight. Uh, there are in excess of thirty speakers remaining, so it, just two minutes per speaker, that's not gonna fit into our, our time limit here. So, Mr. Dedakis, why don't you think of, uh, a solution to our situation? And while we are waiting, Tom Cornelius, uh, you have five minutes to speak.
Please unmute yourself and state your name. Tom Cornelius.
Tom Cornelius, District Three.
Go ahead, Tom.
Okay. Good evening, RTM members and guests. My name is Thomas Cornelius, Vice Chairman of District Three, Chickahominy, and a refuse collector for over forty years. First off, I wanna say that I am not opposed to any tipping fees, pay-as-you-throw, or inserting a line item in the budget. I just want all issues finalized before we settle on a solution. I would like to point out that need, the need to be discussed before we can vote on tipping fees as they were proposed in an effort to raise revenue. Initially to cover the nine-hundred-and-thirty-thousand costs of recycling, but now to cover a three-point-four-million-budget gap. It is the duty of the RTM and its constituents to fully investigate all options before making a decision that affects each and every one of us. Mrs. Camillo states in Item One that, that pay-as-you-throw is his preferred plan, meeting costs. So why is he proposing tipping fees? Is it because it's easier to let our trash haulers take the blame for increased costs? Is it because it's easier to just charge our residents, businesses, nonprofits, a flat fee, rather than giving them another option? Or is it because it starts bringing in revenue on July first, instead he wait, instead of waiting a few months to implement? This hurts the very people who are struggling with the coronavirus and adding another burden at the peak of their struggle, and should not be tolerated. Fees to customers will increase an average of twelve dollars for residents and three-to-four-hundred dollars for businesses, depending what they produce, restaurants, et cetera. This is directly disproportionate to the federal government, who is at this moment handing out stimulus checks to help residents and businesses throughout the community. Do we really need to do this to our citizens without jobs and businesses that are closed now? Charging a tipping fee will not help our town with what I see as a huge problem, the amount everyone throws away. We need to be looking at ways to reduce waste so that when incinerators and landfills close, we are not having to double or triple what we charge everyone. We need a way to incentivize people to divert their waste. There is a proposed permit fee of seventy-five dollars, which is now twenty-five a year, that residents will now be required to pay, even if they go to Holly Hill just once. The town of Greenwich currently has twelve-hundred permits, resulting in four-thousand-six-hundred-fifty tons of garbage. If there was a seventy-five-dollar fee, I haven't been able to do the math, that twenty-five and twelve-hundred permits, that would result in a revenue of ninety-thousand dollars, as Mr. Camillo just stated. More residents will decide to bring their own garbage to Holly Hill because they're faced with an extra fee of ten to fifteen dollars a month, resulting in town losing revenue. That same forty-six-fifty tons of garbage at one-twelve per ton a year would result in lost revenue of five-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars. At seventy-five dollars per year, you would need eight-thousand new permits to cover that deficit. This brings me to my next point, traffic at Holly Hill. The clown, the town claims that there isn't an issue with traffic, but as someone who is there every day, I completely disagree. I have seen firsthand that there is in fact an issue, and I would like to see an alternate plan before traffic at Holly Hill facility becomes worse. Just two weeks ago, traffic was so bad that it backed out the facility onto Holly Hill Lane and up to St. Rock Avenue, leading to police being called in. Faculty staff is shorthanded and not prepared to handle this kind of volume. Not to mention, with car, hour after hour, there is an added pollution within my District Three. The problem has become so bad that the town has now stopped giving out permits for residents to bring their garbage into the facility. How will they handle the demand for more residential permits once tipping fees drive more customers to demand them? Item One attachments state DPW will do its best to handle residents through the interim measures.
Thirty seconds.
Experience may dictate the need for further changes in either operating as, with SAF and/or capital investment at the site. Are we writing a blank check for the DPW? No one has to look, no one has looked into what these costs may be. Why is there such a rush to pass this in April? I'm glad it came out that we'll do it in May. The budget won't even be passed until June. The BET has stated that if tipping fees are not passed, there are two or three alternatives that could work. Find the money by cutting the budget in another place?
Mr. Cornelius, I, your time is up, so I will have to ask you to wrap it up, please.
Okay. There also needs to be discussion. I'm not even close. Lastly, Zoom is a great tool, but it is difficult to have a very clear discussion through the platform. I've encountered several issues that hindered a discussion of an important issue like tipping fees. When asking questions, you are allowed to ask, but then you get muted, allowing for no follow-up to the answer. There is often background noise, people moving away from topics too quickly.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Can I close, please?
Well, I asked you to close.
The RTM will go through every issue before rushing this across. It should be stated that there are now over sixteen-hundred resident signatures on a petition, asking to table the vote on tipping fees for one year. Please vote no on Item One. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dedakis.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, in light of the hour, I, I would like to make a motion to limit further debate on this matter to twenty minutes.
All right, is there a second? This is coming back to us in May. We have a, we have a midnight deadline. Do we wanna come back tomorrow night to, uh, to hear the rest of the speakers and to consider the District Eight attempt to put pay-as-you-throw before us? That essentially is what Mr. Dedakis is addressing. This, if, if we were to cap the remaining discussion time to twenty minutes tonight, we could then take up the, uh, District Eight motion and, and we would, uh, conclude our business tonight. So is there, is there a second to the motion to limit further debate on Item One to twenty minutes?
Second.
All right, it's been moved to second. The motion to limit debate is not itself debatable. I will call again for a raised hand vote. If you are in favor of limiting additional debate on this item to twenty minutes, please raise your hand. All right. I've got 142. Let's lower those hands, please. Can we lower all the hands, please? All right, if you are opposed to that motion to limit debate for 20 minute, uh, for an additional 20 minutes, please raise your hand. All right. Uh, 30, 30 hands are raised. The motion to limit debate has carried. All right, we will continue for another 20 minutes. I have 11:11, so approximately 11:30. We will finish with item one and we will call on the Chair of District Eight. All right, first speaker up is Brooks Harris, to be followed by Dan Ozesmire.
Brooks, please unmute yourself and state your name.
Hi, this is Brooks Harris. Okay, I wanted to speak in favor of this proposal, and I'm sorry that we won't be pursuing it tonight, but I still think it's important for us to, to debate it. I think everybody on, in the meeting, or most people, believe that we need revenues to offset the town's cost of garbage disposal. I think we just disagree on how we could pursue that, or we don't agree that we have enough information to make a decision. I feel like we do have enough information because we've had the deep presentation a couple of times. I've read what Lucia wrote, which was good. There's been debate back and forth on both sides. I'm not sure what other information we could get, but I, the reason I support this, or the main reasons are the precedent. I mean, almost every other town in the state does this. So if we're going to do something, especially if we're going to do something for this budget, we can be pretty sure that something that has that much precedent is not going to have unintended consequences. A second, you know, I've looked at the analysis, and I respect the analysis that's been done by both sides, but in order to conclude that pay as you throw is more economic, you have to believe some assumptions that I think need some more proving, and that proving will happen over time. For instance, whether the recyclable market recovers. Finally, maybe the biggest selling point of pay as you throw is the allure of more environmentally friendly outcome. But it's hard for me to see that the outcome will be so much better by just charging people a few dollars a week. I think the main benefit, the main reason we could lower.
30 seconds.
Is by educating people. And I think that we should try that before we go to something like pay as you throw that is, is, is more forced on people. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Ozesmire, to be followed by James Santa Guida.
Thank you, Dan Ozesmire, District Five. You know, in a lot of ways, I think we're overthinking this issue. The fact is, as everyone said, we should have done tipping years ago. If we had done it 10 years ago, we'd have had 35 million in revenues over that period. There are 169 towns in Connecticut, 167 have some form of tipping, one has pay as you throw, and Greenwich does nothing. Let that sink in. Why is that? Why do 167 towns have some form of tipping? Tipping feels, fees clearly benefit town residents by reducing waste from outside the town, as Fred Camillo has mentioned, and more fairly allocating costs to commercial and nonprofits from residential homeowners. That is why 90% of towns choose tipping. So why does only one town have pay as you throw? One town? Because it's a bad deal for residents. Why? Even in Waste Zero's best case scenario, the town will only save $900,000 a year in waste costs. This savings is based upon some heroic assumptions, such as fees from recycling are going to stay much lower than municipal solid waste. Two, municipal solid waste falls by 30% immediately. So there's going to be a huge change in behavior. Even if this happens, 73% of the savings the town will make on waste disposal.
30 seconds.
Waste, will go to pay Waste Zero. So if everything works out the way they say, Waste Zero will get 73% of the savings we made. If Waste Zero's attempts, assumptions are not right, we will still pay the 650, and it'll actually cost us more. So Waste Zero has no risk, town taxpayers do. Lastly, if we want to spend $650,000 on conservation, we should spend it on innovative programs like Fred Camillo's food scrap programs or other things that will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
James Santa Guida, to be followed by Joshua Brown.
Uh, James Santa Guida?
Yeah, James Santa Guida. Yes.
Go ahead.
Hello and good evening. Just want to let you know that I'm a lifelong resident and a family business in Greenwich for over 100 years and a taxpayer. I'm just a little concerned on the fee that they're going to charge the people do the drop-off center. Roughly at $112 a ton, that's 56 cents a pound. At 56 cents, if it's $25, that means there'll only be taken in 45 pounds a year. At $75, it's 133 pounds per year. I find that hard to believe, because if we have to charge approximately $12 per month for tip fees, that's about 20 to 25 pounds a month. So I just feel that it's totally unfair. If the haulers are going to be charged 112, then anyone that's taking down their own garbage should be charged equally. Unfortunately, it doesn't seem that that is going to be the case. We've been talking about other towns, and I just want to bring it to the attention that Westport does not charge tip fees for residents, only for commercials. That is it, and hopefully we'll be able to talk in the future in the May meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Joshua Brown, to be followed by Molly Salibi.
Joshua Brown, please unmute yourself and state your name.
Thank you, I'm going to pass.
Molly Salibi, to be followed by Jane Sprung.
Um.
Molly Salibi.
Mary, I think it's Mary, so. Uh, Mary Salibi, please unmute yourself.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, Molly Salibi. I'm going to be brief, several things have been stated tonight. Um, when I first heard of pay as you throw, as Fred presented it on January 23rd, I've been doing my homework on waste management, pay as you throw, tip fees, and the like. And at this time, I don't think that the town is ready for either, and I don't think we'll be ready a month from now. And I actually side with the petition of putting tip fees off for a year. Um, we've always paid out of our property taxes. There are other options, and there are issues with both. And for me, sometimes timing is everything, and I believe it's the wrong time. These are com, I never knew waste management could be so complex, frankly. And we are in the midst of a pandemic where we have decided to defer property taxes for three months because we recognize that businesses and individuals are suffering. Um, I've spoken to nine of the 23 hauler on Greenwich website list of license permities, and they will, every single person said 100% of the tip fees will be passed along to customers. And in varying percentage of what they pay, some will be more than less because they are varying fees. Um, but so sometimes things are more of about cost. So it's not necessarily so that pay as you throw is cheaper than tip fees or that tip fees would necessarily even be a better route economically for town residents than being in our taxes. So I think that this is the wrong time for any of this, and there are lots of other options. Uh, a hybrid for the future, and pay as you throw needs revision, and so does tip fees. So, uh, and, and lastly, you know, I, I sort of turned my ideas on its head when, when this first came about, thinking that haulers were.
10 seconds.
Without causing tip fees because that passes along to customers. If we care about our small businesses in our community and supporting our local economy, this, this model. They put people out of business, and we should be concerned about that. Thank you.
Jane Sprung, to be followed by Heidi Matanis.
Jane Sprung, please unmute yourself.
Yes, hi, this is Jane Sprung from District 10. Um, I am in support of tipping fees to solve our budget gap, and the sentiments stated by Dan Ozesmire, I'm in complete agreement. So I waive the rest of my statements.
Thank you. Heidi Matanis, to be followed by Ryan Fazio.
Um. Heidi Matanis, can you raise your hand, please? I don't, I, she may have left.
All right, Ryan Fazio, to be followed by Dan Quigley.
Hey, Ryan, please state your name.
Hello, my name is Ryan Fazio from District 12. I hope everyone on the call is doing well. I wanted to speak quickly in favor of the underlying motion as the best alternative for our town for four reasons. Fairness, fiscal prudence, environmental friendliness, and safety. The first two have been mostly touched upon. Um, but fairness means that it reduces the incentives for haulers to secretly dump thousands of tons of, of waste from Stanford and Porchester and Greenwich at a huge discount. Fiscal prudence means that this gives certainty to our budget process ahead of time and foregoes a major tax increase on people with fixed incomes who own their homes and, and renters who would see their rent go up through property tax increase. Uh, third, tipping fees are environmentally friendly. Uh, they create incentive to reduce, reuse, and recycle for our residents. Uh, so this is a green proposal. And, and fourth and finally, tipping fees are safe and low risk for our residents in comparison to pay as you throw specifically. Unlike pay as you throw, tipping will not force all our town residents to congregate in a few town stores around Greenwich to purchase their garbage bags during a major public health emergency instead of buying generic bags online or elsewhere. Pay as you throw also gives hundreds of thousands of dollars unnecessarily in profit to a private corporation to sell the special bags, which tipping fees, I think, rather artfully and tastefully avoid. Uh, for all these reasons and more, I hope you will support the motion for tipping fees next month. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Dan Quigley, to be followed by Jonathan Perlow.
Dan Quigley, please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to yield my time.
Thank you. Jonathan Perlow, to be followed by Nancy Cooper.
Uh, Jonathan, oh, there we go. Uh, please unmute yourself.
Okay, you can hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, Jonathan Perlow from District Eight. Thank you, Mr. Moderator and members of the RTM. I'm speaking in opposition to the proposed ordinance to institute tipping fees. From the residents' perspective, paying for the town's waste costs through a tipping fee that will be passed along to us by trash haulers costs us no less than it does through our property tax. I'm in fact, it probably costs more, given the administrative fees of collecting the fee. But while the overall burden doesn't change with the tipping fee, it's more regressive than our property tax. With more than one out of four households in Greenwich, Greenwich struggling to cover the basic costs of living. According to the United Way Alice Report, the last thing we need is to increase the tax burden on lower income households, especially during the current economic crisis. I'm disappointed that First Selectman Camillo abandoned pay as you throw that would lower the all-in cost of waste disposal and would yield a substantial environmental benefit. It appears to me that instead of taking a temporary hit on property taxes and building support for pay as you throw, Mr. Camillo wants to plug the budget shortfall by instituting a non-tax revenue stream that will create implementation administrative costs with no economic value, and that will have to be unwound at additional cost if and when pay as you throw is ultimately instituted. And based on the presentations that I saw by D., pay as you throw is not if, only when. Instituting tipping fees is just an accounting move to keep property taxes down. We should instead be pursuing pay as you throws the environmentally and fiscally responsible strategy for dealing with rising waste costs. Uh, thanks so much for your time.
All right, thank you. Nancy Cooper, to be followed by Kathy Whitaker.
Nancy Cooper, can you raise your hand, please? I don't see Nancy.
All right, Kathy Whitaker, to be followed by Kimberly Fiorello.
Kathy, please unmute yourself and state your name.
Am I live?
Kathy Whitaker, yep.
Yeah, Kathy Whitaker, District Five. I don't really have much to add to what some of those before me said, but I'm in support of the tipping fees. I think it's the best way to plug the budget. I don't, I don't see the pay as you throw as being, uh, as being as environmentally friendly or as, as, as causing such a behavior change as people are saying. I think pay as you throw, uh, it won't make me have any less trash. I'm going to have the exact same amount of trash. I'm just going to have to buy special bags to put it in. But I, I just don't see the behavior generating aspect to that. And because of that, I don't see how it change, it's in any more environmentally friendly than tipping fees. And I also don't think that we need further education on this. We've had months to do this, and I, as, for one, don't feel like, if I have more education, I'm going to change my mind on the topic. I have educated myself on the topic, and I don't like it. And finally, I think the tipping fees are fair because they charge people who are now free riders on this, in the system, which is non-residents and some of the commercial trash generators. And for those reasons, I plan to vote for tipping fees in May.
All right. Thank you. All right, we're down to our final two speakers. Kimberly Fiorello, to be followed by Exa Capoza.
Kimberly, please unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this is Kimberly Fiorello in District Seven. Uh, the way our town is organized, we each pick our own private haulers, and the town provides the service of the town-run dumping site. And this is a legitimate function of our town government. And right now, we face the reality of the cost of managing the waste site increasing dramatically. What is before us is the F, the fiscal year budget is tipping fees or not, and the not is increased taxes or deeper spending cuts, uh, plus the uncertainty of the impact of the pandemic. Um, I am very empathetic to the haulers, all of our small businessmen. Still, I believe that reasonable voters can still support tipping fees because it is still a free market solution that maintains the choice of the end consumer, who can choose between the different competing haulers. And for this reason, I hope you'll support tipping fees.
Thank you. And our final speaker, Exa Capoza. Apologize if I pronounce that wrong.
Exa, please unmute yourself and state your name.
Good evening, RTM members, leaders, First Selectmen, and guests, and Mr. Moderator. My name is Exa Capoza, a Greenwich citizen and taxpayer. I'm also a wife to a hauler who has been in business for four years. I'm respectfully asking you to table the tipping fee ordinance. As many others have expressed, there's a lot of items that need to work and be clarified before this takes place. We're currently suffering from a pandemic that has placed many of our Greenwich citizens on a financial constraint. If your line start, it would be around the time that many people are going to have to catch up with the loan and mortgages and retentions or extensions. Please note that the haulers are acting as collectors to cover this line item. There's a need for a clear discussion on how this fees will be paid. Uh, and me taking the rate of $112 per ton and doing the calculations of what my husband does, we are looking to put out about 87, collect 87 or $90,000 that we would need to have to pass to our clients, uh, which our main concern right now is going to be the seniors that live in a fixed income. Uh, and needless to say, that is not money that's going into our pocket, that's going into the town. So we'll have two items. This action at this time would not be conclusive to the haulers or to the people of Greenwich. They would barely be starting to, their transition to emotionally deal with the pandemic and figure out how they recover from the financial impact. Please do table this item, revise and plan it out so it can be effective for parties involved and our Greenwich citizens. And given some of the numbers today that were developed with the $25 fee. and our Greenwich citizens. And given some of the numbers today that were developed with the $25 fee for householders, you know, where's that differential is gonna fall into us, you know, to the haulers? And also, if we're doing this yearly, how often are we gonna have to change, you know, those rates? And how, you know, again, we have to pass this along to our clients. And we need to think about the peoples that are, you know, in financials restraint or under fixed income. So it takes a little, it does take a little longer. This has been in place in other places. And the study that I have done, it has taken Boston, San Francisco, and other places.
10 seconds.
At least a year to put into place. We're rushing this in six months and it's just not the time to do it. It would not do justice. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much. That brings us to the conclusion of the discussion on Item 1 tonight. Item 1 will come back to us at our May meeting. I remind everyone that our May meeting is just a regular RTM meeting. The budget meeting having been rescheduled to June 8. So there will be items to come before us. Well, I have to say that in my view, the RTM has distinguished itself yet again as the premier democratic body that exists. Despite all the challenges, we all should be proud of ourselves that we're able to discuss all sides of the issue respectfully and really, really is an impressive site, in my view. One of the hallmarks of what we do is review items in depth and to try and ensure that we have informed votes, that our members are aware of all sides of an issue and will cast informed votes, we set deadlines by which materials that are going to come before us must be filed. So I have mentioned that District 8, at their district meeting on Wednesday of last week, voted to put a proposed ordinance on pay as you throw on our agenda tonight. And they pointed out that, under freedom of information, materials can be added to a regular meeting 24 hours in advance of that meeting. That is true, but the RTM operates pursuant to our charter, which gives the moderator the authority to control the agenda within certain limits. And we have a deadline for all of our regular meetings by which materials have to be filed. It is three and a half weeks in advance of our meeting. That gives the clerk time to prepare the call and the backup information, the explanatory comments. Gives the clerk time to copy the materials and send them out to all our members so they can read them in advance of our committee meetings. It gives our committees time to dig into the pros and cons on an issue and bring in all those who have information on complex issues that come before us. And that three and a half week period gives our members time to meet in districts and discuss the pros and cons and what was learned in the committees. So when I am presented, which I was on Friday, to add a pay as you throw ordinance to the call for tonight's meeting, I declined to do that for, I think, obvious reasons. Under freedom of information, a public body may consider a non-agenda item. So this proposal that was passed by District 8 is a non-agenda item. And at a regular meeting, a public body can take up a non-agenda item if it first considers a motion to do so and approves that motion by a two-thirds majority. So at this point, I recognize Cheryl Moss, Chair of District 8.
Please unmute yourself and state your name.
Hi, this is Cheryl Moss. Good evening, Mr. Moderator and members of the RTM. I'm sorry to extend this meeting later than we need to. But after a presentation by Deep and Way Zero at our district meeting, we had a very lively discussion in D8 and we voted to add pay as you throw to the April call so that it could be compared side by side to the tip fee ordinance. When it became clear that it was not possible and we would need a two-thirds majority, several of our members created a petition for submission to the May call. As such, I was seeking counsel on what to do considering our Zoom meeting format when I was pressed by some of the members who actually voted against this motion to present it anyway. So here we go. In the explanos for Item 1 on tipping fees in the April call, First Selectman states he strongly supports pay-as-you-throw as the best solution for waste management. Pay-as-you-throw is the only option that gives residents and businesses direct control over their waste expenses. The pay-as-you-throw ordinance that was originally proposed by the First Selectman with an added sunset clause will be on the May call of the RTM, allowing the RTM to compare their two options, tipping fees and pay-as-you-throw side by side at the May meeting. It should be the RTM that decides which proposal will best cover the cost of waste disposal in our town. And we should use the extra month before us to look at this complex issue and compare all our options. District 8 voted for and approved 18, 4 to 1 that the RTM should have the opportunity to look at both options side by side. And their intention was that that should happen tonight. As neither option is perfect, both opinions, both options cover the budgetary gap that would exist otherwise. Having both options side by side to compare will allow our members to choose which option will have the greatest benefit to the town and fewest detrimental effects to our constituents. So as cost increases from municipal solid waste are not going away and as more, as the more we burden our fragile waste disposal infrastructure, the incinerators nearing the end of useful life of ash to landfill, the more our costs will increase. Without addressing the actual tonnage being taken to incinerate or landfill, tipping fees will do nothing to address these cost increases in years to come. We are dooming the town of Greenwich to continue to increase the charges to haulers which in turn are passed on to its residences and businesses. In order for the RTM members to make a fiscally responsible vote on tipping fees, the two must be, the two, they must fully understand the Connecticut waste crisis and be able to fully compare the two waste disposal options that are currently available to our town. As such, the, the motion made, kind of here. District 8 of the representative town meeting moved to adopt the following resolution. Resolve that Sections 9, 1, 9, 2, 9, 3, 9, 4, 9, 11, .1, and 9, 12 of Chapter 9 Waste and Litter, Article 1, Waste Collection and Disposal of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Greenwich are amended as follows. I won't bore everybody with the entire, reading the entire ordinance, but I will read the changes. Pay-as-you-throw program, Section 8, pay-as-you-throw program shall mean the solid waste disposal program whereby all acceptable solid waste must be placed in a town-approved pay-as-you-throw bag. The pay-as-you-throw program shall be in effect commencing on October 1, 2020. Pay-as-you-throw bags shall mean bags approved by the town for the collection and storage of all acceptable solid waste. There's some language placed in there. I've sent this out to everybody, so hopefully you've all read it. The big difference between the actual ordinance proposed by our First Selectman and this one is that the following statement has been added, commencing on October 1, 2020, sorry, excuse me, no, that's not the one that's been added. Expiration, 9, 12, all provisions of this ordinance amending Chapter, amending Chapter 9 Waste, Litter, and Litter, Article 1, Waste Collection and Disposal of the Code of Ordinances, shall cease to be effective May 31, 2023 unless an ordinance extending this section is properly submitted to the representative town meeting and approved prior to May 31, 2023. That is the ordinance that our committee voted to bring to the, bring to vote here at the RTM tonight. And I would humbly ask that you all consider voting on this tonight.
All right. So you are moving that we take up a non-agenda item? Is?
Oh, they muted me. Yes, that's correct.
All right, so it's 11:40. We are scheduled to adjourn at 12 o'clock. And if we take this up and discuss it tonight, it's your intention that we would come back tomorrow night, continue to discuss it?
That is, that is the way my district voted and that is the way I've been instructed to come before you tonight.
Okay. All right. So that being offered on behalf of your district does not require a second. Mr. Dakkas, are you with us?
I'm still awake, Mr. Moderator.
All right, do you have a motion directed to this?
I would move, I would, I would, oh, yes, I would move the previous question, Mr. Moderator.
All right, is there a second? Motion for the previous question is a motion to cut off debate. It is not, it is not itself debatable and requires a two-thirds majority to pass. I will call for a hand vote on Mr. Mr. Dakkas's motion for the previous question. If we adopt the motion for the previous question, we will immediately proceed to vote on the District 8 motion to take up a non-agenda item, a pay-as-you-throw with 20 minutes left in our meeting. If you are opposed to the motion for the previous question and want to discuss this motion to take up a non-agenda item, you vote no. I will call for a raised, so can we lower all the hands, please? All right, I am now going to call for a vote on the motion for the previous question. If you are in favor of immediately proceeding to vote on the District 8 motion to take up a non-agenda item, you should raise your hand now. Why tell that works? It's amazing how that number goes down. All right, I have 73. Let's lower those hands. If you are opposed to the motion for the previous question, this is just, are we going to debate whether to take this up tonight or not? If you are opposed to the previous question and want to debate this motion to consider a non-agenda item, raise your hand, please. All right, I see 56 and 73 and 56 is 129 and two-thirds of that is more than 73. So we are going to debate this motion to take up a non-agenda item, a proposed pay-as-you-throw ordinance. We have no sign-ups on this. We have 15 minutes remaining. Discussion on the District 8 motion to take up a non-agenda item. Dan Ozesmier.
Yes, thank you all. It's been a long night. I truly feel we should reject this, this item to, to, to take this up now. The fact is, I mean, we should reject the District 8 item. We had a lot of talk about, we needed two reads. Frankly, by approving this item as presented by District 8 tonight, we would effectively basically short-circuit and have a read tonight, which would be very truncated without any committee meetings or anything. And we would effectively waive that and then it would come up in May. So I frankly, I know the intent of, of the advocates was probably sincere, but to put us in this position this late in the evening, I, I think is something we should simply reject this and they can bring their motion in May as a first read. Thank you.
All right, we know, we know they have already filed this with the clerk to appear on the May call by petition. Further discussion on the motion to take up a non-agenda item. All right. Diana Singer.
Diana, please unmute yourself and state your name. Diana Singer.
Do we have Diana Singer?
We, we do. She's unmuted, but she's not speaking. Could you state your name, please?
We have to, we have to move on. When you're called on, you have to respond. Aldo?
Aldo, please state your first and last name.
Aldo Pascarella.
Go ahead.
It just seems to me that we have so many intelligent people in our legislature who are thinking hard about this issue, which is a real opportunity. I'd like to see a hybrid approach analyzed where we take the best aspects of both programs and we create legislation that is unique to Greenwich and provides leadership on this important issue. Thank you all.
Joanna Swamley.
Joanna, please unmute yourself.
Thank you. I have, I think that it makes sense, given what I've heard people say tonight, that we take up this item along with tipping fees side by side. And I urge everyone, if you have not already heard the deep presentation, it was a mind-altering for me and I urge everyone to do that and that we consider both of these side by side so that we consider the first read tonight. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to take up a non-agenda item. I, I saw a name, Brad, but it keeps disappearing. Is there a Brad who wants to speak?
And if you've already had your, made your point, could you please lower your hand?
No, no Brad? Jane Sprung.
Jane, please unmute yourself.
Hi, sorry. Yes, hi, this is Jane Sprung from District 10 and I am voting no, that at this point, we should not be taking this up. And that is my vote. Thank you.
All right, I see Brad. Reappear, Brad.
Please unmute yourself and state your name.
Yes, Brad Rudulavaki, District 11. Tom, respectfully, I think I've got a lot of texts here. I think we're a little confused about the way this has been conducted. I think it's not doing the body a great service right now. And I would say that if you added up all those votes, you wouldn't get anywhere close to the 200-plus that you were getting 20 minutes ago. So I think a lot of people were absolutely confused the way this was presented, the, the motion to this, to take up debate on this pay-as-you-throw. Again, that, that's the feedback I'm getting from our, our people. And again, I think if you added up the numbers of the votes, you'd bear it out as well. Thank you.
Margaret Heppleman.
Please unmute yourself.
Hello, this is Margaret Heppleman, District 11. I would like to add to Brad's point or agree with Brad's point. I think we had no idea what that vote was. Tom, you weren't actually telling us. You were describing it as something, some issue, but I think none of us actually understood what we were voting on. And I'm still confused whether we're voting or whether we're discussing taking up the issue, discussing debating the issue. I don't know where we are. So I would really appreciate if somebody could help us understand that.
Okay. This is not an item on our agenda. So there was a motion that we consider. So the question is, do we take it up at this? So the question is, do we take it up at this point of time? Or do we not take it up? We're not debating the merits of their proposal. Right now, we are merely discussing, should we take it up and then discuss it? Which, given the hour here, would require that we come back tomorrow night. If, if we decide to take it up, we're obviously not going to be able to resolve it tonight or finish our work. And we would have to come back tomorrow. So the only question is, should we add this to our agenda? That's the question. And the vote that I called for, I, I had taken a chance that most people probably didn't need discussion on that question. And so Mr. Dacus made a motion for the previous question, which is a motion to cut off debate. That's just saying, let's go ahead and vote right away on, should we add this to our agenda? Not, is this a good idea? Not, is this a bad idea? But the preliminary question is, should we put it on the April agenda? And by a close margin, people said, let's discuss whether we should add it to our agenda. So that's what we're doing now. We are discussing, should we add it to our agenda? This is a preliminary motion. It will have to be approved by a two-thirds majority for us to add it to the agenda. Further discussion. Arlene Lamazo.
Arlene, please unmute yourself.
Unmute. Arlene Lamazo, District 6. I want to support Joanna Swamley's suggestion that whether we, whether we agree or disagree on pay-as-you-throw, I think the best way to proceed is to have it go on to the May call alongside the tipping issue. And that way, we can discuss both and make a, you know, a reasonable choice with enough information, which we won't have enough time for tonight. But I would support that idea of moving this to May. Thanks.
All right, it's coming to us in May. It's been filed with the clerk's office. Greg Zorthian.
I'm having trouble.
Greg Zorthian.
Um, okay.
I saw his hand up.
Mr. Moderator, point of order.
Mr. Collins.
Could I move the previous question again and call for a written vote?
Well, let's see if Mr. Zorthian's there. Then I'm going to call for the vote because of the hour.
Okay, Mr. Zorthian, you are unmuted. Please state your name.
It's Greg Zorthian, and I was going to do the exact same thing. Call the question.
All right. So do we have a slide, Craig, on this? Is there one more slide? All right. So this is the District Eight motion to take up a non-agenda item. They are proposing an ordinance that would be pay-as-you-throw. That we're not voting on a pay-as-you-throw ordinance. It's just, should we add this to our agenda tonight? It requires a two-thirds majority to pass. So if you want to add this to our agenda tonight, you vote yes. If you do not want to add this to our agenda tonight, which would require us to perhaps come back tomorrow, you vote no. All right. I hope that's clear. You want to add it? You vote yes on this motion to take up a non-agenda item. If you essentially want to end the meeting right now, you vote no. Because if this does not pass, we will have completed the business of our meeting. So I ask the district tabulators to please conduct the voting. We'll start the clock. We'll await the result of the vote. All right. We have the result of the vote on the District Eight motion to add the pay-as-you-throw proposed ordinance to our agenda. Those in favor, 42. Opposed, 152. Abstaining, zero. That item has failed. Well, I thank everybody for their patience in staying till the very end. I thank, again, all those who made this possible. Jenny Larkin, Craig Jones for staying with us. Kim Spazano and Alexis Vulgaris, again. We owe our ability to meet to you. So I thank, I thank all of our members. And there being no further business to come before the meeting, this meeting stands adjourned. I wish you all good night. I will see you in May. Thank you.